Ladies and gentlemen. Am I on? All right. Thank you all for joining us this afternoon for our July County Commission meeting. It is 3 o'clock, so we're going to go ahead and get this show on the road. We're going to start with, I'll recognize Commissioner O'Keefe to introduce our invocation speaker.
Thank you. I'm honored to introduce Brian Stringer, who has many titles in our agenda, but who's made very clear that his most important title is servant, to do our invocation.
How's everyone doing this morning? And this afternoon, I'm sorry. Yeah, I've been working all day. Well, good afternoon, Commissioners, community leaders, and faith leaders, and everyone gathered here today. We could just quiet our hearts for a moment and take a deep breath and come before the presence of the Holy. Gracious and loving God, we gather today as one people, bound not by uniformity but by a shared longing for justice, for peace, for the well-being of every person who calls this county their home. We pause to remember that while we come from different backgrounds, different congregations, different professions, even different perspectives, we are neighbors, we're partners, we're siblings in the shared work of build a beloved community. God, break down any walls of us versus them that divide us, remove the suspicion that poisons collaboration, cleanse us of the pride that insists on our way alone, and deliver us from the fear that sees our neighbors gain as our loss. Today, God, we lift up commissioners who bear the weight of public trust, give them hearts of compassion that refuse to ignore suffering, give them eyes that seize the hidden and the overlooked, give them the ears that listen not only to the loudest voices but to those too often silenced, and grant them courage to choose what is right over what is easy or popular. We pray for our faith leaders, our congregations gathered across this county and city. May we remember that our call is not only to preach within our walls but to advocate beyond them. Remind us that true worship is caring for the poor, defending the marginalized, lifting up the broken-hearted. Help us to see that our congregation and our commissions are not opponents but partners in this work of justice. We pray for community members filling these chambers today, wearing green as a sign of hope and determination. Bless this advocacy with persistence but also humility. Let their passion be marked by love for our neighbor. Keep them faithful to the promise that no one in our city should go without shelter, dignity, or hope. God, unite us, not in pretending we have no disagreements, but in remembering that our disagreement should never cost someone their home, not in erasing our differences but in elevating our shared humanity. We remember the word of Scripture that says, "You will not need to fight in this battle. Position yourselves, stand still, and see the salvation of the Lord that is with you." We claim that promise today, not as permission for inaction but as an invitation to trust, to stand together in faith, to speak truth without hatred, to pursue justice without vengeance, to do our part and trust you for their outcome. We know that affordable housing is not merely a budget line but a moral commitment. It is the measure of who we are as a city. We cannot claim to love our neighbors if we will not house them. We cannot say we value the community while ignoring those pushed to its margins. So today, God, let this meeting be more than a formality, make it a sacred moment, a moment of conscience, a moment where politics bows to morality, where budgets reflect compassion, where policy embodies justice. Bind us together, oh God. Commissioners and congregations, community members and community leaders, those with power to decide and those with power to witness. May your unity not be lip service but live commitment. May our word not be empty but lead to action. And may today be remembered not for division but for the day we chose to come together for the sake of our neighbors who call this place home. We pray all this with your humble hearts and fierce hope. It is in your matchless name that we pray. Amen.
Commissioner O'Keefe, you'll lead us in Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner O'Keefe. And thank you, Mr. Stringer. We are now on awards and presentations. And we're going to start with Commissioner Maddox is here for a proclamation recognizing Dr. Adrian Peters. Mr. Maddox.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If I could have Dr. Peters.
Come on. Hey, how you doing?
Good. Mr. Chair, the proclamation reads, whereas Adrian Peters, E.D., is the founder in the, of the Achieve Academy, a nonprofit private school which opened in 2016 for students with unique abilities. And whereas Adrian Peters, having been in education for 33 years, recognized every student deserves access to a nurturing, inclusive, and empowering education that meets their unique needs and talents. And whereas education serves as the cornerstone of a thriving and forward-moving society and institutions dedicated to the pursuit of knowledge and personal development, play a vital role in shaping the future. And whereas the Achieve Academy, dedicated to serving students with unique abilities, has provided a supportive and individualized learning environment that fosters personal growth, academic readiness, and self-confidence. And whereas educators, administrators, and the staff at the Achieve Academy has demonstrated unwavering commitment to the success of each student by embracing innovation and a diagnostic, prescriptive education approach, ensuring each child enrolled receives instruction that meets them where they are academically, emotionally, and socially. And whereas the Achieve Academy has reached a historic milestone with the first graduation of its first class in the year 2025, marking a momentous achievement in the school's mission to empower students through innovative instruction and individualized support while fostering confidence, academic success, and lifelong love of learning. And whereas the graduates of the class of 2025 have shown perseverance, determination, and a remarkable progress, inspiring all who have had the privilege to witness their journey. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of Leon County Commissioners in Leon County, Florida, do hereby recognize and commend Adrian, Dr. Adrian Peters, the Achieve Academy for outstanding service to students with unique abilities, and honor the first graduating class for their achievements and contributions to the school's legacy. This is signed by the chair as well as the rest of the commission and attested to by the county administrator.
Thank you all so much. Thank you so much. I am going to steal some words from my school board member, and I'm going to say that I am deliciously proud of the Achieve Academy and the accomplishments of my unique learners. All of the students at the Achieve Academy have ASD or are on the autism spectrum. And this year, we graduated students who not only finished high school with traditional diplomas, but they have gone on to TSC for post-secondary work. Now, if you had told me that in 2016, that that's what would have happened in 2025, I'd have been, "No, you're kidding," right? But we are so proud that we were able to give the parents a safe haven for their unique learners, to give the unique learners a place that they can call home where all of their uniqueness is commonplace, right? And so our goal is to continue to grow, continue to create a path for these learners that don't always fit into that traditional model of schooling. But our goal is to create a safe haven and to make them productive citizens in our community. I thank you from the bottom of my heart. My parents thank you, and my students thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Peters. Commissioner Maddox.
Thank you, sir. If I could have Ms. Ashley Scott come up, please. Mr. Chair, the proclamation reads, whereas Ashley Scott is an entrepreneur, author, and philanthropist dedicated to transforming lives through education, grant writing, and social impact. And whereas Ashley Scott exemplifies visionary leadership, unwavering dedication to community uplift, and a lasting legacy of positive impact. She recognizes education serves as the cornerstone of a thriving and forward-moving society and institution dedicated to the pursuit of knowledge and personal development, play a vital role in shaping the future. And whereas in 2020, Ashley Scott opened the Oxford Learning Academy, which expanded from a preschool to a full-service kindergarten through 5th grade elementary school, serving over 600 families. And whereas Oxford Learning Academy has, for five years, demonstrated a steadfast commitment to excellence in education, nurturing the young minds and talents of students through innovation, innovative learning practices, dedicated mentorship, and a deep sense of community. And whereas through its tireless efforts, Ashley Scott and Oxford Learning Academy have positively impacted the lives of students, families, and educators, fostering an environment that promotes academic achievement, character development, and lifelong learning. And whereas Oxford Learning Academy proudly boasts 100% of their students scored at or above the average of the Renaissance Diagnostic Assessment, and 88.8% of VPK students were proficient in higher in language and literacy vocabulary. I think that deserves a hand there. Again, I say 100%. That's pretty cool. Whereas the 5th anniversary of the Oxford Learning Academy marks a significant milestone that celebrates the vision, perseverance, and collaborative spirit of its founders, staff, supporters, and students. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of Leon County Commissioners in Leon County, Florida, we do hereby recognize and commend Ashley Scott, Oxford Learning Academy, and extend sincere congratulations to all those who have contributed to the continued success and impact on the community. This is signed by the chairman, as well as the rest of the commission, and attested to by the county administrator. Congratulations.
Good afternoon. I just want to say thank you to Commissioner Maddox as well as the Board of County Commissioners for being advocates for us and for small business owners as well as education in our community. None of this would be possible without our incredible village. And so if you are a part of the village, I am sharing this with each of you, so can you all please stand? The entire, well, part of the village. We started our journey in the middle of the pandemic. And so in August 2020, we opened our doors when everybody else was kind of closing. And we didn't know what to do, but we had crazy faith and we knew that it would work out. And so I'm so grateful for my family, my husband Jonathan Scott, my kids Ethan and Zoe, as well as my parents, Thomas and Lorraine James. And before I thank all of our community partners that are here, I really have to give a special shout out to who I call my golden girls, my golden angels, which is Ms. Cheryl Collier Brown, as well as Ms. Anita Favors, Ms. Jackie, everybody in between, and you ladies know how much you all mean to me. So thank you all so much. Thank you so much. Without further ado, I'd just like to say thank you to our staff that is here, our administrators, Ms. Fay, who supports our early childhood education program, and Ms. Marcus, who oversees our K-5 program, as well as our educators that are in the room as well. And to our partners, thank you all so much. I wish I could go through the entire list. The ELC of the Bitbin, DCF, the Florida Department of Education, Florida Anubis University, the Bitbin Minority Chamber of Commerce, the Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services, as well as our smaller businesses, because this mission that we have at Oxford extends more than just educating our students. It's also being a product of Leon County. It's a pipeline for us to put back into small businesses too. So we thank partners like Therapeutic Endeavors, SG Mental Services, Jasmine's Photography, Infinite Public Relations Firms, as well as T-Bar, Touch by Our Worlds, Making Miracles Group Home for being that for us and allowing us to sow seeds in your program. So thank you all for your support. Thank you to our parents that believed in us and that trust us with your most precious gems. Thank you.
Yeah, hold on one second. Oh, no, no, you go ahead. All right, Ms. Scott, stay right there. Commissioner Cummings and then Commissioner Proctor would like to say something.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to congratulate Dr. Peter. Did she leave? Okay, maybe she'll stand up. I want to congratulate both of these educators, Dr. Peters and Dr. Scott, for all of the work that you all are doing to educate our children. You all are both innovators. You founded your own school, and it's paying off. And so we, on the dais, we appreciate all of your hard work and blessings to both of you, and the best is yet to come. You're showing us your best, and it's going to continue to be beneficial to our community and to our children. So thank you all so much.
Thank you, Dr. Peters, Dr. Scott. Ladies and gentlemen, members of our commission. On our dais right now, maybe the only member here who's old enough to recall that you got a spanking in school if you didn't have your homework. You got a spanking in school if you had the wrong answer. And you got spanked in school for sundry things like talking and all of that. So there were a lot of categories at which I received spankings in school. But this morning, a continuation of the work which School Board Member Jones called us this morning together at Pineview to lift up and to sound the alarm of the peril facing schools that have been facing the challenge of the loss of the United States Department of Education. And I was voluntold by School Board Member Jones today that, and I received a T-shirt, that I would be volunteering at Oak Ridge Elementary School. And the supermajority of this dais was there this morning, as was the city commissioner and other civic leaders. Whether it's a private school or a public school, whatever, all of that, children need to learn. And I respect highly what you all are doing. And we need everybody, regardless of the label it's called, public, private, whatever it's called, and all of that. I need everybody, in particular the younger people here, to appreciate that the United States Department of Education exists largely as the federal government agency that would imagine what Brown versus Board desegregation would look like in our nation. And unless there is a Brown versus Board 1954 Supreme Court decision decreeing that public schools would be desegregated, you don't have a U.S. Department of Education which regulates, facilitates, orchestrates, and keeps up and monitors desegregation. It keeps up and it monitors programs that reach out to poor children, children who are quote disadvantaged. The Department of Education is that which undergirds what's called Title I schools, which derive the title from the number of students who qualify for free and reduced lunch. Now, we're in some serious times. And this is not just about that right there, that sheet of paper, which I appreciate, Commissioner Maddox. But we're on a hell of a steep slope in this moment of history that the pendulum can go backwards and a U.S. Department of Education not undergirding food for students in the morning, after-school programs. All of the needs that children don't come even to the schoolhouse on day one. That right there is a serious issue. So, School Board Member Jones, you called us together today and gave us a charge. And we recognize what lies ahead. And I'm encouraging you all to continue in your journey. And for everybody in here, that when these leaders call upon you to help, to aid, I don't know, can you still beat children if they have the wrong answer? The old school.
Put a hand on it.
The old school. The old school. But we salute you sincerely. And it's in a time such as this that what you're doing, the light of it, its illumination, it bodes well for a song that I recall as a child hearing, "Ain't gonna let nobody turn me around." Turn me around. So let's move forward. A charge to this community, to all of us, to not let nobody turn us around. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Proctor. Commissioner O'Keefe. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. I am happy to introduce President and CEO of Family Cafe, Lori Fahey, and a number of the important team members there to present this proclamation. Whereas Disability Pride Month is celebrated each July to commemorate the signing of the Americans with Disabilities Act on July 26, 1990, a landmark civil rights law that guarantees equal rights and opportunities for individuals with disabilities. And whereas Disability Pride Month is a time to honor the history, achievements, experiences, and ongoing struggles of individuals with disabilities, and to celebrate the inherent dignity and worth of every person. And whereas in Leon County and throughout our nation, individuals with disabilities make meaningful contributions in all areas of life, enriching our community with their talents, leadership, and perspectives. And whereas organizations like the Family Cafe, a Florida nonprofit dedicated to providing individuals with disabilities and their families with information, connections, and opportunities for advocacy, play a vital role in empowering the disability community across our state. And whereas the Family Cafe hosts the largest statewide cross-disability event in the nation each year, bringing together thousands of Floridians to share resources, build community, and celebrate disability pride. And whereas the Leon County Board of County Commissioners remains committed to fostering a community where all individuals, regardless of ability, can thrive and contribute meaningfully. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Leon County, Florida, that the month of July 2025 be recognized as Disability Pride Month in Leon County, and that all residents are encouraged to honor and celebrate the strength, resilience, and pride of individuals with disabilities in our community, and to join in building a future where everyone can participate fully, live with dignity, and lead lives of purpose and opportunity. Dated this 8th day of July 2025, signed by our chairman, commissioners, and attested to by County Administrator Vince Long.
Wow. A special thank you to the Commissioner O'Keefe and all to you Leon County Commissioners for recognizing this July as Disability Pride Month. Thank you so much. Before I say a few words, I'd like to introduce hardest-working staff in the state. Jeremy Countryman, Vice President of the Family Cafe, Sarah Fahey, Meeting Planner, Tanya Hanson, our Financial Administrator, and Josh Tapia, our Youth Leader. And again, my name is Lori Fahey. So again, thank you. So it's clear that the Family Cafe shares a deep commitment to supporting the disability community, striving for a world where people with disabilities have every opportunity for fulfilling life. The upcoming 35th anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act is a significant milestone to not only celebrate, and Disability Pride Month provides a crucial time to reflect upon the progress made. We're proud to be part of the Leon County community. Our statewide event served about 130 families from our community. This recognition amplifies the dreams, acknowledges the struggles, and celebrates the triumphs within the disability community. It is a powerful way to honor the advocates who paved the way and to recommit to ongoing promise of full inclusion, accessibility, and opportunity for all. On behalf of, for those who may have heard this before, Justin Dart, who we refer to as a godfather of the ADA, I want to thank you again, and I want to tell you to lead on, lead on. It's something that we must do. Thank you.
Thank you. You guys are going to get a picture there.
Yep.
Thank you.
Too many people.
Oh, we've had many more. There you go. All right. Thank you all very much. Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Administrator, we're on Citizens to be Heard on Consent and Non-Agenda Items. Oh, oh, oh. You see how quick that happened? Mr. Administrator, I'm going to take a point of personal privilege here, I'm sorry, and recognize Chauncey Haynes to step up to the podium, please, for a special presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I forgot that so fast.
No problem. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for this opportunity to make a special presentation. Mr. County Administrator, I just want to give you a heads up. Commissioner Cummings does not like surprises, so I may be looking for a job tomorrow. So I just want to give you a heads up. So you have no idea how difficult this is to keep something from your boss. But I received a letter early in January 2025, and I did not tell Commissioner Cummings that I received this letter. Then I was wondering what would be the appropriate time for me to present this to her. Just in case you did not know, July the 15th is a national holiday, and it just so happens to be Commissioner Cummings' birthday. In honor of your birthday, Commissioner Cummings, In honor of your birthday, Commissioner Cummings, on behalf of the best aide on planet Earth, I would like to ask the best commissioner on planet Earth if you would come down, Commissioner Cummings, if you would come down, please. That's Commissioner Cummings, Commissioner Proctor. I did call her name. I did call her name. Thank you, Rochelle.
Escort her, escort her, Commissioner Proctor.
And this letter is from the White House.
Okay.
And I'm going to read the verbatim. "To the best commissioner on planet," no, I'm sorry, "to Ms. Carolyn Cummings, Chair of the Board of County Commissioners, Tallahassee, Florida. Dear Ms. Cummings, thank you for welcoming me to Tallahassee during my recent visit in the aftermath of Hurricane Helene. My administration will continue working hand in hand with local and state leaders like you as Florida continues to recover and rebuild. Please know that Jill and I are keeping you and the entire state of Florida in our prayers. Sincerely, Joe Biden."
Well, Chauncey has significantly raised the bar for Chief of Staff Behavior, Commissioners. So Kyle Frost, if you're out there, I might get, I might get letters from presidents of HOAs, not presidents of the country. Mr. Cummings, before you speak real quick, I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask the board real quick, in recognition of our unbelievable female representative on this board's birthday, which is coming up on July 15th, I want to ask, and we're out of order here, Commissioner, Commissioner, don't beat me up, I want to ask if we put together a proclamation in recognition of Commissioner Cummings' 75th birthday, which is unbelievable. We have a motion, a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. I don't even have to ask, Commissioner Cummings, we love you more than you know. We're going to give you a proclamation on your, at your event.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, oh, oh.
I thought she was turning 30.
You know what? She looks like she's turning 35. Madam Attorney, is it, is it possible to fire a commissioner? Because if she's going to fire Chauncey for presenting this surprise, I'm pretty sure she's going to fire Brian for telling the world her age. I'm just trying to make sure, I'm trying to see what's possible. It's like, Ripley's Believe It or Not, I don't think people are going to believe it.
Oh, thank you so much. No, my age is on my invitations and whatever, so no. People ask about my age, and I said, well, it's the four Gs, a good God, and good genes. So I thank God for my longevity. I thank my mom and dad for the great genes. And I thank the best aide on planet Earth. I had no idea I had received this letter from former President Joe Biden. Lord, what a surprise, what a surprise, what a memory to hang on my walls for my son and hopefully my grandchildren. But I just love my commissioners. Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. County Administrator, and all my fellow commissioners for all your love and respect and support, and I just look forward to continuing to work with you all. Thank you, Mr. County Administrator, County Attorney, thank all of you all.
Commissioner Proctor, you want to say anything?
Yeah. We, one of the last words that Jesus said from the cross was, "Father, forgive them, for they know not what they do." Ladies and gentlemen, just forgive Chauncey Haynes. Forgive him, for he knows not what he says, you know, the greatest commission, y'all know.
Good job, Chauncey. Commissioners, I know we could probably spend the rest of the night talking about how much we love Commissioner Cummings, but, and I'm willing to entertain that if we want to. If anybody would like to say anything, this is a nice opportunity to do that. But for me personally, you know, you are an absolute queen. I could not respect you more. Come in with me in 2020, and if there is ever a reason to celebrate another human being, it is to celebrate you. And I think I speak for all of us when, when I say that. We love you more than you possibly know, and we are awestruck by you on a daily. So thank you for, thank you for letting us hang out with you. All right. We are going to get back on it now. We are on consent, Mr. Administrator. Thank you, Commissioner Chairman, Commissioners, we have a few. Our citizens to be heard on non. We have just a few cards submitted for citizens to be heard on non-agenda items. The first, Reverend Sylvia Jones, to be followed by Jordan Rios.
Good afternoon. My name is Reverend Sylvia Jones. I reside at 4250 Woodbridge Road, Tallahassee, Florida. I am co-chair of the Cajum Affordable Housing Strategy Team and a member of Mount Zion AME Church in Havana, Florida. We have turned out our Cajum members once again, this time to express our gratitude. Because of the lengthy agenda, we have elected to speak now rather than wait for the individual agenda items.
Ms. Jones, I'm sorry, but this is non-agenda items time. This is a consent and non-agenda items time. So if you want to speak on the Affordable Housing Proposal, which is on our general business agenda, you're going to have to wait. If you don't.
I would move to adjust the agenda, allow them to speak now, if it's all right.
Do we need to waive the rules, Madam Attorney? Okay. All right. Is there a motion? Mr. Minister?
I'll second.
All right. Ms. Jones, is there, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, go ahead.
Go ahead. Thank you. We've, this time we, we want to express our gratitude. Because of the lengthy agenda, we have elected to speak now rather than wait for the individual agenda items. Two other speakers will follow. We're here to express our appreciation for the initiative you're taking to address the dire shortage of rental housing that families with extremely low and very low incomes can afford. The directions you gave staff at your 2026 budget workshop and that you will vote to ratify today is a testament to your sincere concern for the welfare of the working families of our community who are most vulnerable. We're grateful for the dedication that county staff has brought to this challenge, in particular, Assistant County Administrator Shinkton Lamy, with the support of County Administrator Vince Long, and for the fruitful collaboration we have shared with Mr. Lamy. We thank all of you who have shown your support as we have navigated our way through different pathways to address this challenge. We thank you for agreeing to meet with us individually throughout this time. We would like to thank Commissioner Maddox for his motion at your January 28th meeting that set this collaborative process in motion, and for his motion at the Blueprint Board's Budget Workshop that led to their commitment of additional funding for this initiative. We also thank Commissioner O'Keefe for his longstanding outspoken advocacy. Cajum's mission is to work with local officials to address community justice challenges. You have listened, you have understood, and you have committed to act. We're here today to celebrate as you ratify that commitment by voting to approve option one for agenda item number six, approving the proposed expenditures for the 2026 State Housing Initiatives Partnership Allocation, and option number one for agenda item number 18, ratifying the direction provided by the Board during the 2026 Budget Workshop, in particular items J and K. Scripture says to love your neighbor as yourself, so we thank you for putting that love in motion.
Next speaker, Jordan Rios, to be followed by Otis B. Young.
My name is Jordan Rios, and I'm a public school teacher in Jefferson County. I am going into my 12th year of teaching, and I'm the proud mother of seven amazing children, ages 11 down to just one. First, I want to just say thank you for giving me the chance to speak today, and I especially want to thank you for the work you're doing to address the affordable housing crisis here in our county. I know that today you're considering important funding allocations that could help so many families. It means a great deal to us just to know this issue is being taken seriously. I'm here today to not just, not just to tell my story, but why these decisions matter so deeply. In 2023, I was living in Tennessee with my now ex-husband. Behind closed doors, my family was living with abuse and fear. Financially, we were drowning. His gambling addiction meant rent went unpaid for months. Eventually, we were evicted, but worse than the eviction was knowing that I had to get my six children, pregnant with my seventh kid, safe. And I knew I couldn't just move across town. I had to leave it all behind for their safety. I came to Tallahassee in May of 2023, pregnant and raising six children, trying to start from scratch. I had a job offer. I was ready to work and build a new life, but I did not realize how hard it would be to find a place for us to live, even with the job offer in hand. Everywhere I applied, I hit barriers, too many kids per room, credit checks that punished me for a marriage that hurt me in every way. My credit was destroyed, and no one wanted, no one wanted to take a chance. I spent money I didn't have, $100 here, $200 there, on application fees for rentals, just to be told no over and over. The truth is, we found housing only two days before I had to move and start my new job the following week. That was the thin line between my children sleeping in beds or sleeping in a car, between safety and the street. And even once we moved in, things didn't magically get easy. There were months that I had to make impossible choices. Do I pay rent on time, or do I buy groceries? Do I drive uninsured, or do I miss work? Keep the lights on, or pay the late fee? After I had my youngest child, I even received eviction notices because I couldn't return work right away, immediately following childbirth. Thankfully, we were never formally evicted, but the fear was real, and it still is. I know how quickly one unexpected bill or one health crisis can push us right back to that edge, and I want to be clear, I'm not someone who's unwilling to work. I'm a veteran teacher, I'm college educated, I'm bilingual, I work full-time, serving the children of our community. But even with that, the system was set up to say no to me at every turn. What changed everything was one landlord deciding to give me a chance. No hard credit check, that's it. Just trust. And with that one opportunity, my credit score in less than two years has gone from 489 to me being able to work with a lender to get approved to be a first-time homeowner. My kids are stable, they're doing well in school, they feel safe, and that stability has changed everything in our lives. My oldest daughter at that time was suffering from depression, and now she is the only fifth grader at Jefferson County K-12 School that made a five on ELA math and science. Commissioners, this is why the funding you're considering today matters so much. These allocations are not abstract numbers or lines on a budget, they are real hope for real families. They are the difference between sleeping, children sleeping in beds or in cars, between parents going to work or losing everything. Families like mine don't want pity, we want policy. We want the chance to stand on our own two feet, to provide for our children, to be part of the solution to leave abusive situations. And you, by investing in affordable housing, are giving families like mine the chance. I know I'm out of time, I just want to say thank you, thank you for letting me go over as well, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
All right, thank you.
What's your name and address, sir, for the record?
Name is Otis Young. Address is 8930 Wingfoot Drive, 32312.
Thank you.
Great. My name is Otis Young, I'm the senior pastor of Kingdom Life Tabernacle here in Tallahassee. I'm a pastor by name, but a counselor by profession, and humbly and gratefully the newly-elected president, co-president of Capro Area Justice Ministry. Today, I stand before you not just as a faith leader, but as a lifelong servant of the community, who has, who has walked with families through their deepest struggles. I've seen parents break down because they can't afford, can't afford or find affordable places to live. I prayed with grandmothers who, who were concerned about their grandchildren, who had nowhere to lay their heads at night. I've counseled people who worked two and three jobs, or two and a half jobs, but still can't find, can't, can't afford rent in the city they call home. That's why today's action matters so deeply to me. By approving this funding and these program changes, you're doing what, you're, you're doing more than just moving budget lines, you're showing compassion, you're sending a clear message that this county cares about its most, its most vulnerable. And for that, and on behalf of Cajum, and the many congregations that we represent, I want to say two simple words, and that is, thank you. And as I say, as I say, thank you, I want to be clear that this is just the beginning, but it's a step in the right direction. Affordable housing is not a problem we solve with one vote or one year, it's a commitment, a covenant, a promise we keep to our neighbors. And that is why Cajum, we're not going anywhere, but we will continue to show up, we will continue to partner with you, we will continue to hold each other accountable because that's true community, which means working side by side, year after year, to ensure that every child, every child has a safe home, every parent has a hope, and every family has a fair chance. So today, Commissioners, let's celebrate the step as an act of compassion and caring, and let's look ahead together to the other justice challenges we can face and solve for the good of all of our people. I say thank you for your leadership, I say thank you for listening, and I say thank you for your commitment to justice. Sign yours truly, Otis B. Young.
Commissioners, that was the final speaker from Cajum. We have two additional speakers, Max Epstein, to be followed by your final speaker on this section of the agenda, Nida Marlene Davis.
Hello, Commissioners, Max Epstein, 1001 San Luis Road. I was hoping not to have to take off work today to be here, because we've been working great with Matt Cavell to set up our town hall meeting, except for the fact that we weren't given a choice on the location. We chose a date and a time, we were supposed to get locations. We're being told it's going to be held in Woodville, which is almost 25 minutes away, round trip. It's not within the Lake Monson area. Leon County holds all their Monson area meetings at the Baptist Church and other bunch of faith leaders here today. It's larger, it has screens all around. I think we had seven of the 12 city and county commissioners come to our first town hall meeting at this location. We've reserved it for the 26, so we'd like to see the board here, direct staff, please, to hold it there, or at least have us, you know, some, you know, say in the matter. This is important, because half those folks are not going to be able to make the meeting if it's in Woodville. There are a lot of older folks, a lot of disabled people who live in the area, and to make them go to Woodville makes no sense. So, really appreciate if you do that, otherwise, it's been great. I mean, everything that we've asked for, perfect. You know that I presented some water quality information at your, at your last meeting. And Commissioner Caban, I know on your Facebook, you have been saying something, hearing that the water quality is the best it's been in 20 years. So I posted two, some, some of these concerning trends that I saw. And right here, this is the nitrogen north of Monson and south of it. This is the most concerning, and this is the least concerning, and I said this at our last meeting. This is well below, you can see here, this one curves up. And I even asked staff, thank you, to provide some more information. You can see they provide actually some of the averages here. So I just wanted to know, if you saw a line like this, would you think that we have the best water quality in the last 20 years? And staff was able to provide me with all of the water quality data that we had over this enhanced drawdown. If you take a look at the water that's coming into the lake, you look at the 20-year line, the 10-year, the 5-year, and now the 3-year line is all broken above. And actually, for the first half of this year, we are currently violating the TMDL for nitrogen coming into the lake. That's a problem. Now, it's the same for the phosphorus, right? You see all these that are above the line here, above the line, and you can see the staff provided some more here. But if you map it, does that look like the best water quality we've had in the last 20 years? And each one of these little points here that's above the line represents a violation of that. And I'll wrap up just by saying, if this were 2008, and they were going through the TMDL process, if 10% of those samples are above that line, it's automatically TMDL process, if 10% of those samples are above that line, it's automatically considered impaired. So both North Monson Slough and South Monson Slough would be considered impaired right now. So please, I hope, move location to the church, and we'll have discussions just like this, and I hope you all come. So thank you.
Commissioner Caban?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know this is technically out of order, but I think it's important with an issue like Lake Monson that misinformation is not spread. Unlike Mr. Epstein, I actually got a degree in chemistry from Florida State University. So when you are doing an experiment, a public experiment, there is always going to be deviations amongst the average, and those get written off. And I had my notes previously, what I had from the meeting last time, where I had the data to show that we were within the margin of error. Additionally, I live in town. For the neighbors who live along Lake Monson and Woodville, it is an eight to 10-minute drive to the Woodville Community Center. So I myself will be driving the same distance as you to go to the Woodville Community Meeting, considering we live relatively in the same neighborhood. And so I want to thank staff for their efforts on this project. Additionally, which we will find out today, we got $800,000 from the state legislature for Lake Monson water quality improvements. And so I want to thank staff for their efforts on that, and I'm looking forward to the town hall. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Any other speakers?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, final speaker, Nita Marlene Davis. Okay.
All right.
And that concludes your speakers. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Administrator. We are on consent agenda, Commissioners. We have one item pulled. Can we get a motion for everything except for the pulled item?
So moved.
We've got a motion from Commissioner Minor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second was, where, I'm sorry, Commissioner Maddox. Okay. We've got a motion, a second, on all consent items excluding number 15. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. We are on item number 15, Mr. Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, item number 15 is your fiscal year 2324 annual audit and financial statements prepared by the clerk of the court and comptroller, along, of course, with our external auditors. Commissioners, I saw some of the clerk's team here today, which I'm sure, who I'm sure be happy to answer any questions you might have, along with your staff. This item was pulled by Commissioner O'Keefe.
Commissioner O'Keefe, you're recognized.
Thank you. Just to start the discussion, make a motion to accept the report and, I'm not done yet, and ask staff to work with the clerk's office to bring back a corrective action plan on addressing the number of findings.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Before a second, Mr. Chairman.
Ask a question?
Sure.
Mr. Administrator, you said the corrective action report, if there was some things in there that needed a corrective action report, my question is, don't they do that anyway? Or can someone answer that for me?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Is someone from the clerk's office, would they like to come on up and address that?
You're recognized. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, Chairman, members of the Commission. I'm Kenneth Kent. I'm the chief deputy in the clerk's office.
Thank you, sir. Won't you guys be doing a corrective action report anyway?
So we have--
Plan? I'm sorry.
Yes, sir. We have looked at the findings. We've responded to them in the audit report, and we're actively working with various departments and other constitutional officers to make sure that we correct all the items that were identified in the annual financial report.
Thank you. So Commissioner O'Keefe, the only thing I'm wondering is, if they're already doing it, you're just asking for it to come back to us?
I'd like to be able to explain it, and that's, but start with the motion. Perhaps, perhaps someone would like to make a motion that accepts the report, and then let me make comments on why that's not what I would go with.
Okay, I'll make a substitute motion that we accept the report, Mr. Chair.
All right, we've got a motion, a second. We're in discussion. Commissioner O'Keefe?
Thank you. So--
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, that would be the main motion, because he didn't get a second.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We've got a--
A motion.
Yeah, your motion and his second, and he's going to discuss.
Sure. Thank you. So this is, the reason I pulled this is, this is an unusual number of significant immaterial major findings. It's very unusual. And so, and I know this may not, this may not be received well, because it is not typically how much we go into it, but I'm hoping I get a little deference, since this is my professional expertise, just like we usually give more deference to if we're talking about hospitality industry. We would do so with Commissioner Caban, nonprofit leadership, Commissioner Maddox, Commissioner Minor, lost lawyer legal stuff, Commissioner Cummings, and teaching and professorship, Commissioner Proctor, and Commissioner Welch. So I'll start with, I saw this report, and typically, you get, ideally, the goal is you get no findings, okay? And now, there have been findings in the past years, but I wanted to be able to illustrate that in a way that was clear without having to take all the accounting classes. So I compared us to Alachua, Leon, and St. John's County, and I looked at their two years of audits, and combined, none of them had any findings. No significant findings, no material weaknesses. Significant finding means there's an issue, an error in the process, but it's not a big enough number that people will care about. A material finding means it's a big enough number people will care about, and it gets corrected in the financials, but it gets caught by the auditor. And so while we have had findings in the past, there have been one, one or two. This is five material weaknesses and one or two significant deficiencies. And so while, while the numbers are, the final numbers, the auditors have said are, we believe, correct, that's after they've caught these mistakes. And so I do want to preface with, the clerk's office and everyone in there has been amazing in talking with me about this, and talking about the ways they're addressing it and everything. And as we know, we work very well with them, and I know that they worked to uphold the highest standard of transparency and accountability. The reason I bring it to our commission is because this report is to the county commissioners, and the financial statements is the county commissioners, and we are tasked with oversight. Normally, we don't have to dig into it, but this is a very high number of findings. And so I'll skip over the specific accounting parts of the findings, and you're right, in it, there's a response that says we're updating policies, or we had turnover, or we're doing this. And that is, that's all in there, and that's all satisfactory. But when you have this number of them, what it is evidence of, and what it has is higher risks to make other errors, to have other misappropriation of assets that aren't part of this, and that's in the report. That's the part of the audit being done by external auditors on behalf of us. And what this audit is saying in multiple findings, there is a higher-than-normal risk of assets being misappropriated or amounts being reported incorrectly. That's why I'm pulling it, and that's why, while there is, you know, a paragraph or two in each thing about management's response, at a high level, what happens is, this stuff is found in the spring, the spring in the audit, for a year ago, okay? And we put in new, we, sorry, the clerk's office puts in new policies now from the finding, you're already six to seven months into the year of the audit that's going to happen again in a year. And so the reason I'm asking for a corrective action plan to be brought back in collaboration with the clerk's office and the audit committee to the commission is to make sure that we are on top of a comprehensive plan to address this, because there is a higher-than-normal risk these will be repeated, or that other things will be found, just because it is difficult to, it can be difficult to get out of these, once you have a number, to get them turned around, it takes time. And I do want to say that we've, so again, I want to preface it, accountants would know this is not, to say that these are not excellent professionals, is to say that this is what was found in the audit, and we are collaborative, and we want to make sure that we know what's going on, to make sure that we are being responsible for the citizens and taking our oversight role seriously, while respecting it's the clerk's authority, who is a duly-elected official, that we rely on for our financials and for the expense and control of taxpayer dollars. And so that's why my original motion was in there. And I just have a couple of questions for either the county administrator or the clerk or whoever is appropriate. What is our responsibility when we vote on accepting these financial statements as county commissioners? What are we saying that we are responsible for?
Would you like to go, Ken?
Well, you are responsible for attesting to the public, to any bondholders, to the auditor general, that the financial statements that are reported are stated fairly and accurately. And in this case, there was an unmodified opinion. You have complied with all those requirements. I do agree with you, Commissioner. It was not the audit we wanted to see. There were a lot of moving parts this year. There was changes in the Governmental Accounting Standards Board proclamations, which had to be built into the review. Also, we've had some personnel changes that we have worked diligently to catch up on. I believe that we will, in fact, have a much fewer audit findings next year, and a much quicker turnaround time on completing the annual financial report. So we are taking to heart what you're saying, and we do appreciate the fact that you've spoken with us earlier. But I just want to reiterate, this is a complex audit, and involves the county, which has, you know, extraordinary number of initiatives going on to benefit the citizens, and also five constitutional officers. So with that many moving parts, it takes some time to get an audit like this, as complex as it is done. We appreciate very much the auditor's diligence and review, and also the oversight, and working with the county's Office of Management and Budget, and the various project managers throughout the county to get the accurate information that was needed to complete the audit. We believe that, based on the work we did this year, that we are in position to go through this more diligently and quickly next year. We believe that we've found where the choke points are, and we're going to be working to rectify those and streamline the process. In fact, we do have a meeting coming up with management and budget, pre-meeting for our annual closeout meeting. And again, we want to make certain that the items that were found, particularly items like capital asset disposal, the leases, and how to calculate those leases, that we work through those earlier in the process and get those done before we get into the testing that the auditors are going to do, so that there are fewer items that end up being brought up at the end of the audit.
Thank you. And so I'll just add that the normal, the normal result is no findings. I have never had a finding where I've been audited at any of the agencies I've worked at, and it doesn't mean, like you said, it doesn't mean the statements aren't correct, but what it means is, there's in this case at least five things where the statements were going to be wrong by an amount that mattered. And the auditors caught it and put it in there, but that's not, this is also not just about these five items. This is about if we are not, if we don't have everything tight and under control in these processes, what is the next process? And I want to make sure everyone understands, an audit is not covering everything. These are only findings that were done out of the little, little sample of items. For example, not tracking assets that were, equipment, computers, all that stuff, that were disposed of, and not updating if they've been gone. There were 19 tested, and six were incorrect, out of all of the assets that were disposed of. And what that very boring detail means is, we didn't find, the auditors didn't find five issues out of looking at every transaction. They found five issues out of looking at a small number of transactions. And so I'll drop the audit talk there and just say that I think, as a CPA, I wanted to be clear that this is an unusually high number of findings, that there is a lack of control. And I fully believe and know that the clerk's office is on top of fixing it, but it's a big enough number of issues that I think it's our responsibility to pay attention, more so than waiting until next year. And I will make a substitute motion that we accept the report and ask staff to work with the clerk of court and the audit committee to update us with their corrective action plan.
All right, we've got a substitute motion. Is there a second? Seeing none, dies without a second. We're on the original motion. Commissioner Maddox, did you want to elaborate, or can we vote on it?
Yeah, just give me one second. I just, because it's not that I was against his motion, I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to figure out what's, what's the difference between what he's asking for--
Right.
--and what's actually going to happen. Staff is already going to work with you guys on that. As I understand it, we are here just to make sure that we're attesting to the financial statements being correct.
Yes, sir.
And so now, what I think we could do, if you want to really get into it, because even the corrective actions that you put in the corrective actions report will be performed by the clerk's office?
Yes, sir. So let me go through that with you. One, we'll have this, a two-pronged approach on this. One, we will have our finance staff working with the various departments, with OMB and the other constitutionals, to address these issues. Also, we have an audit oversight committee made up of audit professionals, both from the community and within the county. And with our internal audit staff, we'll be going through these as well, to make certain that we're reviewing the internal controls, and that any controls that need to be enhanced, that those changes are made, and that they're also brought back to our audit oversight committee for approval. So we are going to be going down both those roads. We're very appreciative of you, the board, county administration, for the resources you've provided to us this year. For example, you've allowed us to have a third internal auditor, which will allow our audit director and our chief auditor to focus more on these items, and we intend to have them really take a hard look at each and every one of these findings, to make certain that they're not repeated.
All right, thank you. We've got, all right, Commissioners, we've got a heavy agenda. Can we move on? Commissioner Minor. Then followed by Commissioner Proctor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know we've got a heavy agenda, but this is why we're here, right? So I agree with Commissioner Maddox. I mean, I'm not objecting to the motion at all, you know, and I do see our responsibility to not only attest to the accuracy of the audit, but also making sure that, you know, we're doing our part as county commissioners to oversee the operations of Leon County government. Let me ask you, so when would be the next time that the county commission would get an update on the progress on the corrective actions?
So we'd be happy to share one with you after we have the audit oversight committee look at the findings and what efforts are being made. I'd be happy to provide a report to the commissioners.
I have no problem with making sure that that's provided as a status report in a future county commission meeting. Just, I mean, that's probably a matter, of course, isn't that automatically provided to us as--
So that, the audit advisory committee reports, I believe, are available to the board, but I'll make certain that it is brought to the board.
I, I don't, I'm not a CPA. I don't, I don't see the gravity of the seriousness that Commissioner O'Keefe does, perhaps because I'm just, I don't have that background. But I think we all want to see, you know, what the status is and what the updates are. So, you know, I have no problem trying again, restating Commissioner O'Keefe's motion, but with a modified approach, basically adopting the staff recommendation to accept the report. But when there's an update available, having that presented to us as a status report for an upcoming commission meeting. We don't need to have it as a separate agenda item where we discuss it unless the status report comes back to us and it's worthy of bringing it up for discussion. But I think that's, I think that's a very reasonable request, so I'd want to restate that.
I can amend it.
I want to restate the motion. I don't mean to take your emotional weight.
He said he would amend his to add that.
Unless you just want to make a motion--
Want to make a substitute motion?
Well, that is my motion. You know, I make the motion that, essentially, that, similar to Commissioner O'Keefe's, accepting the report.
He'll amend his.
Is there a motion on the table right now?
There is a motion and a second.
Oh, okay. My apologies. All right. I didn't hear that.
Make a substitute motion?
No, no, no. No, I'll support the motion on the table. My apologies, I didn't hear your motion.
I like, but is the, is the status report, the status report is always going to come, already going to come back, Mr. Administrator, or no?
I think we were, I think, based on what you heard here today, we were clarifying that if that's what the board directed, that we would make sure that it came back to you. The question is, did you want it to come back as an agenda?
I don't want an agenda item. I would like, I would add that it come back as a status report, somebody wants to pull it, pull it.
Yeah, yeah. My mistake, I didn't hear the motion. My apologies on that, but--
I offer the friendly amendment. I will point out, status report, as status has defined, but I will point out, the difference is, if we don't ask for this, nothing comes back until the next audit's complete. That's the difference, is, so I would ask for a friendly amendment that we accept the audit report and ask for a status update in an agenda item once their audit committee has made their plan.
I'm not willing--
Sorry, not the agenda item, a status report.
Yeah, once, once the work is complete, I would like a status report to come back for the board's review of the corrective action.
It's reasonable. That's reasonable.
That's fair. Commissioner Proctor. Is that the motion? All right, Commissioner Proctor?
Ask County Administrator to walk with me a little bit on this. The Dave Lang years as Clerk of Courts were often tumultuous with respect to the Board of County Commissioners and the Clerk duking it out over who was the ultimate voice over things financial for the county. And you recall the tensions of Clerk's Office with County Administrator then. And it's my understanding that eventually, we came to recognize that the Clerk is an independent, state-recognized constitutional officer, elected in their own right, and that aside from signing all of our paychecks, the Clerk is the chief financial officer for Leon County. Those things are financial. There is a... Our desire for efficiency and so forth with another constitutional officer's handling and whatever their report card might linger, but we ain't they daddy, and we can't spank them, if you will, whatever's on their report card. That's between them and the school, the teacher, whatever, but we're not their parent. And Vince, if there is any... Just grabbing a metaphor, if you will, to explain that this Board, we have no oversight over the Clerk's Office, and if you had to put it on a scale, Clerk has more oversight over us. And that's been the learning experience that dates back for me over the years in looking at tensions that we've had. But I'd like for the County Administrator to amplify, if I've missed a mark in those statements.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Well, the great thing is, I haven't heard anything so far I would disagree with. So, again, yeah, of course, the nature of the Clerk's Offices, they are not only the Clerk, but the custodian of funds, and the comptroller, and they have statutory and constitutional authority, and the relationship is supposed to be arms-length and all of that. And so, but again, I think what you've heard is sort of a willingness to sort of cooperate, work through these issues and that sort of issues, and the commission, you know, leaning in and expressing, you know, concerns and that sort of thing to make sure that we're on the right track. Again, I haven't heard anything that I would disagree with so far. I would have weighed in if I had. I think the only wrinkle we've heard here tonight is to have something come back to the Board to make sure that you have a status report on those corrective actions for your public consideration, even if it's a status report. So, again, but happy to weigh in more if there are any specific questions about the audit.
Please, Commissioner, can I bring up one last comment? So, one thing to bear in mind is, as the Clerk of the Circuit Court, we are acting as the Board's accountant. But in order for us to provide the data that you want and need, it has to be provided to us. So, this is where the partnership really comes in. We're only as good as the information we receive. So, at the beginning of my remarks, I mentioned that this is a complex operation involving departments of the Board and five constitutional officers. Sometimes what happens is that information does not get to our finance office timely. And it's not an intentional issue. It's not in any way a reflection on the hard work of everybody involved, but that coordination is very complicated. So, one of the things we're looking to do this year is start that process much earlier. I think that this last audit helped us map out a number of areas for us to look at. We intend to fully look through those, but it does require cooperation. It does require those hard-working individuals that are out in the field to get that information to us so that we know, as you mentioned now, those 16 items, I think it was six of them, had in fact been disposed of. We wouldn't know that sitting on the seventh floor of the County Administration Annex. We have to have that information provided to us. So, we are going to make a diligent effort to get with those agencies, to make certain that that is in fact happening. But I don't want anybody to think that the Clerk's Office is not working as hard as it can or as diligently as it can prepare these financials and get these done in timely and in accordance with the rules of the Auditor General and Florida statutes and basic accounting practices. We very much want to do that, fully intend to continue to do that. We're always looking for opportunities to improve, and we will do so.
Mr. Chairman, I might also have one last comment. And it's to say that over the last recent years, that if we're not aware, that the courts have had difficulty being funded to the level of need. Judicial requests for more judges has not been met. For Florida's courts, it's difficult across the street. The Clerks Association likewise is not the fair-haired child of the legislature. And as I was looking, another agenda item today that indicates that state employees were going to get a 2% across-the-board salary increase, but note that the state's budget provides additional percentage raises for state law enforcement officers and firefighters. So, you don't see additional monies supplied to either the courts or to the clerks of courts in Florida. I don't understand the dynamic of what it is that the legislature fails to understand the need for additional funding, but I dare not say it's hostile. I'm just not... I'm saying that... What I am saying is that it's not loving. And the kind of raises flat for law enforcement and the kind of reception that the Sheriff's Association, its constitutional officers, getting across the street, and additional money on top of that, the clerk and the courts of Florida are simply not in that league of respect and reward. So, I'm aware of difficulties that dates back to the efforts of Chief Judge Charles Francis, who called hell across the street. And I don't know if it's because we're a Democratic county, or I don't understand the philosophy, but they're not treated the same. And I think that that's fair, the resources are not keeping pace with the demand for those entities of government.
Mr. Chairman, would you mind having the motion on the floor restated, please?
My motion is for option number one, our staff recommendation, and we will have a status report come back on the corrective action once the committee is done doing this work.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? No? None? Passes unanimously. We are on to general business.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Agenda item number 18, Commissioners, is your first general business item, the ratification of the Board's action of June 17th on the FY '26 Budget Workshop regarding the development of the Tenet of Budget. The item also recommends, Commissioners, rescheduling our next board meeting and public hearing from Tuesday, September 16th to Monday, September 15th, to meet the statutory deadlines for holding the public hearing on the non-ad valorem fire assessment and fee. Commissioners, again, this should all look very familiar to you. We just had this workshop very recently. You'll see the alphabetical listing of all the actions that you took, which we seek your ratification on. You'll notice that one of the outstanding issues that we received direction on the Board at that time was to tentatively approve the performance raises at 0 to 5 with an average of 3%. But the Board did provide direction for us to bring back an option to provide the 5% across-the-board pay increases. We've done that. It's listed in Table 1 for your consideration. And with that, Commissioners, we're recommending options 1, 2, and seeking your direction on option 3. We have no speakers on this item. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Minor, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion for option 1, option 2, and then for option 3, basically having directions for the staff to implement the 0 to 5% performance pay increase with an average of 3%. And I imagine we might have some discussion about that, so I'll save my comments for that to come back around. Thank you, sir.
All right, we've got a motion for staff recommendation, options 1 and 2, and for board direction on 3, option 3 for a 3% average performance-based pay raise. Is there a second? I will second for discussion. And we are in discussion. Commissioner Minor, you have the floor.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. And we spoke about this at length during our workshop, so I won't belabor the point. But, and if we've got different opinions on this, that's fine, you know. We'll just lash it out and talk it through like we always do. I feel pretty strongly, as I've said before, about the 0 to 5% performance-paced increase with an average of 3%, because we have... By having this continual increase of 5%, we're having a recurring fiscal obligation during times of particular uncertainty. And so, I think we've done it for multiple years in a row. I think it's time for us to take a step back, return back to the policy that we had three years ago, four years ago, and because during this time of unprecedented financial uncertainty with what the state might provide, what the economics are going to provide, I think it's the right course of action. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Minor, may I ask a question real quick? Is it... Would it be possible to just do a motion on 1 and 2 so that 3 can have a separate vote?
Yes, sir. I was going to offer that if it got...
Okay, so, is that cool?
Yeah, so I'll bifurcate the two. I'll have a motion for options 1 and 2.
Let's just dispense... Can we dispense of 1 and 2 first?
Yes.
Okay, I will second.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
If I can.
You got a better way of putting it?
I'll make a motion for option 2.
Okay.
Because I can't... I have to...
Oh, you got to... Okay. So, you want to go ahead? Commissioner Minor, you want to do option 2?
I'll do option 2.
Okay, option 2. And we got a second. And if there's no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. That one passes unanimously. We're back. Commissioner Minor, you still have the floor. Do you want...
Yes, sir.
Can we do option 1 if Commissioner Maddox needs to recuse? Go ahead. You want to state your recusal?
For the record, I will be recusing myself from option 1 because I am the CEO of Family Province's Big Ben, which receives CHSP funding. I could bifurcate it, but in abundance of caution, I'm just going to recuse myself from the entire item.
All right. So, we've got a motion for option 1 with recusal of Commissioner Maddox. I will second that for discussion. Is there any... I got people here wanting to discuss. Anybody want to discuss that part? Okay. Commissioner Cummings, you are recognized. Commissioner Minor, did you want to speak any on option 1, bifurcate?
No, sir. I'm fine for this.
All right. Commissioner Cummings, then Commissioner Maddox, then Proctor, then O'Keefe.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In regard to option 1, I wanted to see if Commissioner Maddox would amend his motion to exclude M, approve everything A through L, N to through O.
Oh, yes.
Exclude M, and that way, that would leave M over. Leave it out for full board discussion, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Cummings, maybe the Administrator can clarify. Does option 3 sort of delete option M?
It's fine. We would have taken that as addressing the option, but that's okay. We can do it either way.
So, can we move then without removing option M and still address it through option 3? Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yes, we do.
It's kind of stated twice.
Yes, yeah. We wrote it to clearly articulate all the actions taken by the Board. Again, if the Board would like to...
So, if we pivot on option 3 away from what is written in M, does it...
Yes, I think it's fine. If you'd wish to... If you want to clarify here, what you want to do on M, to be very clear, how you want to address that.
Okay, so we can deal with option 3 effectively in option M, but we've already withdrawn option... We're already holding back on option 3 or delineated it. So, do we need to remove option M, is my question?
I think that would be fine. If it makes it clear for everybody to understand, it would be fine.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, may I ask a question?
Commissioner Cummings has the floor. What...
But no, I was just saying, if we leave M in, it's confusing if we're going to deal with option 3. So, I think to make it clean, pull M out, approve everything.
So, we have a motion for option 1, excluding Commissioner Maddox and removing option M, and we are in discussion.
I'll second that.
Okay, we've got a motion. Well, you... I think, Commissioner Maddox, who made the motion? I feel like you made the motion. I seconded it. We are in discussion on option 1, excluding M. And Commissioner Cummings, you are back up if you want to talk.
No, I'm good. If he accepted that, that friendly amendment.
Yes, ma'am. M's out of there. Commissioner Maddox, you're up next. Is that just your recusal? Go ahead.
That was my recusal, but I will go ahead. Well, I'll wait till...
Yeah, if you don't mind, I'm waiting. Commissioner Proctor, then Commissioner O'Keefe.
I'll wait to option 3.
Okay, okay. Commissioner O'Keefe, you're on option 1, minus M.
Thank you. I just want to point out that the... I just want... I don't want to pass this up without thanking Cajum, Commissioner Maddox, all the Commissioners, so that everyone knows this vote is ratifying the vote we took at the budget to create the overall $500,000 commitment to affordable rental housing for low and very low-income families. And I just want to make sure that we celebrate that when we take this vote.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Keefe.
The other thing is, and my concern... My concern, I'm not making any substitute motions or things, on removing M in this is, the point of one is to ratify what we had decided, and we had decided to do 0 to 5 until we find out if there's new money.
Right.
By not ratifying M in this motion, we don't determine anything on salary, and we have to decide the specific thing in 3 instead of ratifying what we decided and then deciding to override it. So, I'm not making any... I'm not... I'm just pointing that out.
Yeah, I mean, I get it. It feels like six, one half a dozen, the other half.
It was a little bit of a challenge to write, but I think we all see the issue.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Whatever the Board decides, we'll clarify.
Okay. Commissioner Maddox, you want to comment?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm actually rethinking my recusal now because I want to be in on the Cajum vote, but I do want to say, I want to thank those folks from Cajum for trusting the process. When we first started this, there were a lot of conversations, kicking the can down the road. You know, you guys can commit to just a Pinellas plan, but you gave it a chance, and now we're here with the Leon County plan that others can copy and imitate. And let me tell you something. I got approached in the grocery store saying, "Support this thing," at church, saying, "Hey, I'm very disappointed that you kicked the can down the road." Let me tell you something. They were on me, but look where we are here today. And I think you all should be proud of your advocacy, and you should be proud of your perseverance and the way you pushed for this. The young lady who spoke earlier, your story is so inspiring. To know that you went from where you are to now about to buy a house, that's the thing dreams are made of. And I appreciate you sharing that, but I did want to take the opportunity to say that I appreciate Cajum working with us. I appreciate our staff for being innovative in the ideas they came up with for us to get here. And I'm just... I'm proud of us as a commission. I'm proud of us as a community to be able to do this. So, I think, Mr. Chair, I will go ahead. I will go ahead and recuse myself out of my caution. But I support the budget. I support what we were able to do here today, and I support Cajum in the way you have worked with us. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Maddox. We've got a motion. I'm sorry, Commissioner Cummings, you want to talk on this one?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just felt like I would be remiss if I didn't just make a comment about our vote today as far as affordable housing is concerned. And I think to our cap the area justice ministry, it just solidifies our vote today, the vote we took at our last meeting. I think it solidifies the way we have always felt with the County Commission. We have always supported affordable housing. And so, we've done it now in word and in deed. I think the record of Leon County commitment speaks for itself. And I think we've said over and over again, for the last few years, we have funded, I think, close to $5.8 million in direct support of affordable housing. And that does not include our votes as far as bond issuances are concerned. I believe I'm correct, right, Mr. County Administrator? $5.8 million. So, we appreciate you all's advocacy, but I want you to just recognize that we've always supported affordable housing, and this is just a great demonstration of our level of support. So, thank you all so much. We appreciate you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Cummings. All right. We've got a motion by Commissioner Minor, seconded by myself, for staff recommendation, option 1, minus option M. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously with Commissioner Maddox in recusal. Now, we are on option 3, and it... Thank you. Commissioner Proctor, you are recognized.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we go with the 5% across the board for county workers as pay increases for next year.
All right, we've got a motion. We've got a motion.
Mr. Chair, second the motion.
All right. The vice chair, Beach Tuit, Commissioner Cummings.
Oh, okay.
We've got a motion from Commissioner Proctor, second from the vice chair for a 5% across the board pay increase. We are in discussion. Commissioner Proctor, do you need to discuss?
Well, to the question Commissioner Minor lifted, and that was the contingency of the previous M under one, M under one. Just for the record and for the public's awareness, that our board, its hesitancy had something to do with first identifying where funds would come from. Our community certainly has seen the hiring of personnel and people not know how you're going to pay the president of Florida and M. But you hire them and give them a salary, and still unclear where the money will come from. That's not what this board wanted to do. You said, "Hold up. Before we make a commitment, let us understand the sources, the streams of revenue." And a part of your discomfort was simply in waiting for the final numbers from Mr. Akiyami. And I wanted to make sure that as we get to this point of budgeting and belt tightening, that our administrator is able to sarge any doubts or hesitations which were raised before, consistent with words from Commissioner Minor today. Mr. Administrator, what comfort can you give to this commission that we are walking on safe and stable ground?
Chairman.
Sure.
Very briefly, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner, again, we are following the direction that the board provided to identify dollars that would be available at this point in the budget process, which we've done. And so again, the dollars are there if this is the decision that the board decides to make.
Very good. So the dollars are there. That's the good news. We're not huffing and puffing and making commitments that we don't know how we will fund, and we've never done that. The patience with which we've shown, the optimism with which we've held out, the numbers and the monies coming in, it's amazing process how this works. But patience always is rewarded when faith is applied. So I believe that for all of the efforts of our county employees who are here looking us in eyes, and those who vote for or against us or whatever, but to say that we appreciate them in this time, you know, there's a big, beautiful bill. It's big, but not beautiful. More than ever, the incision against poor folk, middle-class people, and the transfer of $4 trillion out of programs that help people like those who work for the county and myself and you. $4 trillion transferred to America's top tier at the expense of the bottom 40% is the reason that we can do our best to reward those who show so much concentrated effort for our county and our mission, our goals, and our operations. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. Commissioner Cummings.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, I thought I seconded the motion, but Commissioner Caban...
Thirded it.
I thirded the motion. But no, I just want to take the opportunity to just laud our county employees. They recently received an additional seven achievement awards at the NACO convention, and the county administrator pointed out to us that over the last, what, five, six years, they've received 118 achievement awards. So we have great county employees. They make us look good. And I appreciate the county administrator going back and editing his comments because one of the things we said last, we asked him to do last month is do a revision depending on the property values. And so when the property appraisers submitted those property values, they came in where we've netted over a quarter of a million dollars. And using that quarter of a million dollars, we can give our employees across the board 5% raise without having to deal with any fund balances. The county administrator has presented a balanced budget to us based on that quarter of a million dollars that we've realized, plus there were some expenditure reductions in certain areas. So I feel good about the financial situation that we're in. And I just feel that we should reward our county employees while we can, because we might be in more dire straits next year. And I think we are anticipating some hard times. But right now, with inflation at the level that it is, I think all of our employees deserve a raise. And we are not just giving it to them. They've earned a raise, Mr. Chair. So I'm happy, Mr. Vice Chair, to support the motion on the floor.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Keefe?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I... So many of the employees of the county do so much better of a job than, I won't speak for the others, but me. And they do incredible work, and the awards are well-deserved. And that's why I would like to get back to merit, is motivating the top performers. And that is where if I do the bare minimum versus if I go above and beyond and everyone's getting 5%, one or two years, three years, you know, it's become our permanent policy. Let's be real. If I suggest if this is what we want to do this year, it's... How many years have we done this?
Three.
Three. This will be the fourth or the third?
Fourth. This will be the fourth.
This will be the fourth. And so perhaps if this is the way the majority board wants to go, we can save ourselves time each year and just make it the policy.
Second.
And I mean it, because I don't think it's whether employees deserve a raise or not is necessarily the debate. I think the debate is whether we should do it based on merit. And so, and you know, I'd be, if we want to give more money, which I'm good with, but I prefer it stay merit. You know, I'd be happier with something instead of 0% to 5% with an average of three. If we want to add five, make it merit-based, but it's an average of five, that we are giving them more money to spread around, but we're still doing it based on merit. And that's why it's, that's why I won't support this. I support more money, but I would like it to be merit over the long term. The other question I have is, what's the lowest, not a name, that would be rude, but what's the lowest full-time county salary?
The name is Ken Morris. But again, the commissioners, the lowest county salary, I think it was last budget year the board, or maybe two ago, the board put in place a minimum $15 an hour for hourly employees, and then that's grown each year with a, tied to an index. And so, to keep pace with that.
Rough numbers, do you know the average? No, never mind. Rough numbers, how many employees make less than $60,000 a year? I know I'm just throwing it at you, but you have no idea.
I'd have to get that information to you.
Okay. You know, I would... To me, if we're adding money based on position across the board, I'd like to see us say, you know, 5% of $30,000 is a lot less than 5% of $150,000. And so if we're modifying it to make sure that people who do the work we rely on, I would rather see us do something where we add this money and say, everyone who makes under $60,000 gets a thousand, minimum $1,000 raise. So it's more. I'm not, the reason I'm not suggesting these substitute motions is for order. We're well in the process. But I'd like us to consider that there is a good reason to attach someone's work performance to overall raise, as long as we're doing it fairly. And if we're not doing it fairly, that's a management issue we should be addressing. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Caban?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to support the motion on the floor. And last, in our budget workshop, I stated that as long as we had the money in the budget and we did not have to go into reserves, I would support the motion. And I'm a man of my word, and so I intend to do so. However, the reason why I am supporting the motion is because of times like Sir Richard Road, times like Team Leon, all the work that's being done on Lake Munson. And, you know, in my businesses, I tend to say, hey, I support merit-based raises. However, look at the awards and look at the effort that we, our team is doing at Leon County. We have a very nimble government, and we have a lot of positions that are wearing different hats and they're doing different jobs. And particularly, I mean, think about our Public Organs Department. Sir Richard Road, they rebuilt a bridge in a day to allow our residents out of a neighborhood of which they were literally trapped. And so that is the reason why, and for those efforts, why I intend to support this raise. And I really do want to give a big shout out to our Leon County staff and the county administrator for this. Us being able to be nimble as a government allows us to be competitive and take good care of our employees, and I think that speaks volumes. So I intend to support the motion on the floor. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Caban. Commissioner Minor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know a big part of our concern during the budget workshop was being able to pay for the raises this year. And Commissioner Proctor, you mentioned that. And it's good news that the county administrator and his team have been able to find allocations for this year. The issue, though, is that this is a recurring obligation. And so we might be able to find funds for it this year, but it's a burden in perpetuity. And so that's another point. And one thing that I didn't harp on during the budget workshop last time, but I spoke about it last year and the year before, which is that for managers, whether you're in Leon County government, whether in your private sector, one of the most important tools you have in your toolbox is showing appreciation and recognition for the people within your team that are really doing an incredible job. If you have an across-the-board pay increase, it's hard for you as a manager to show recognition for those folks that are truly getting up every day and working hard. And we've talked about the folks who rebuilt the road. We talked about the folks who are working so hard on Lake Munson. Those people are the ones that are likely to get the 5% merit increase. We're talking about the people that are working so hard. If there are folks in within the county structure, I doubt there are many, but if there are folks that just aren't really doing their best to serve the people of Leon County, I don't think they should get the kind of raise that our best should get. And so that's been my point from the very beginning. When we first started talking about this three years ago, that's been my position since then. You know, we need to take care of our county employees. You have an obligation, and we all want to take care of our county employees. We also have an obligation to the public to make sure that we're being good stewards of their taxpayer dollars. And so we've talked about this for the last three years. We've had a long, thoughtful discussion over this topic for the last three years. And I know we feel differently, and I respect that. I'm going to support the merit increases, and I'm going to support that next year because I just, I think that's an important part of what Leon County needs, to be an innovative, dynamic organization. Across-the-board increases don't instill in most people that innovation, that hard work, getting up every single day, putting your boots on, getting out there and working for people that live in this county. I believe that management tool is something we need. And so that's where my position is. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Minor. Commissioner Maddox, I was going to close this out. You want to go ahead? All right. Appreciate the arguments. I'm going to be consistent on this. I think that this is now 20% over four years. I think it's really bad fiscal policy. I think that while we may have the money now, we all acknowledge that we very likely won't have it next year, or the year after that, or the year after that. There is very likely going to be cuts in the amount of money we collect here, which means that will have to translate somehow to the workforce, which is our biggest expense. So for us too, now we've created approximately $5 to $6 million in increased expenditures, liabilities, if you will, in perpetuity. I think that Commissioner Minor's points are very well-taken about the management tool aspect of it. I think the county administrator's told us this is what he would prefer for a management tool aspect. But I think for us as policymakers, we are setting a very dangerous precedent here, which we, to Commissioner O'Keefe's point, we are effectively saying now, we're going to give you 5% across-the-board pay increase at this county every year, which means in 20 years, salaries are going to double. I don't expect our revenues will double in 20 years. So I think that's a really tenuous policy decision for us as commissioners. And it's important to understand that the alternative here is not nothing, it's 3%. But that extra 2% across the board costs $1.5 million a year more than the 3% average. And so when you commit yourself to that year upon year, that's $15 million after 10 years. That's $30 million more dollars after 20 years. And if you, it's a significant slippery slope in terms of fiscal policy. And so that's why I cannot support it. We don't have a lot of discretion in our budget, right? The sheriff asks for what they ask for, and we tend to give it to them. We, you know, fuel costs go up, you know, insurance costs go up for our staff. There are certain fixed things that we really can't avoid. We don't have a lot of discretion in our very lean budget. This is one of the items where we do have discretion. And now, four years in a row, the board will be deciding to use its discretion to permanently add a liability to its balance sheet. And I think that's just not the, not a conservative way to govern. It's not fiscally sustainable in a normal circumstance, but definitely in the current circumstance with the, with the almost certainty that we're going to lose revenue here at Leon County government. We are going to very likely lose revenue. And so what we're doing is, we're putting our administrator and our department heads in a position where when we have a, when we have to do 5% across-the-board cuts to every department, whose position is going to be eliminated. So yeah, we're giving somebody a sort of, you know, hey, this might feel good. You're going to get a, you know, you're going to get a $3,000 or $4,000 raise this year. Next year, your job could be on, you might get a $60,000 or $70,000 cut to your job because we are not putting ourselves in a position to adequately accommodate losing revenue. We're actively right now adding revenue, adding liability to our county. So for those reasons, I will not even like casually oppose this. I will adamantly oppose the current motion. So with that being said, we have a motion for 5% across-the-board pay increases for county employees. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And opposed?
Aye.
No. Passes four to three with Commissioner Minor, Commissioner O'Keefe, and Commissioner Welch in opposition. Thank you, commissioners. We are now on to our next item, I think, Mr. Administrator.
We are. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, this should be a quick one. It is, seeks your approval, the 2026 CHSP grant recommendations to agencies in the amount of $1,324,500. And again, this represents our year two of the current two-year cycle. Again, we've provided some other relevant information. Therefore, we're recommending options one and two. We have no speakers on this item.
I think you missed 19.
I'm sorry. I am sorry. I must have.
Feels like 21.
All right. Thank you.
Citizens Charter.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, again, item number 19 provides an overview of the proposed charter review process with recommendations to establish the Charter Review Committee. Again, this all follows the... Again, this all follows the outline provided in the county charter, again, which provides that the board, every eight years, at least 12 months before the general election, that we convene this committee to review the county's home rule charter and that this committee can propose any amendments to the Board of County Commissioners for your consideration, again, to place on the general election ballot. Again, Commissioners, we are recommending here options one through five. We have no speakers on this item. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Administrator. Commissioner O'Keefe, you have the floor. Would you, I'd like to make a motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion on options one through four.
All right, we have a motion for options one through four. We're going to leave option five dangling for a while.
Well, it is to provide direction. Do we have to?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Got you.
Actually, you buried the lead. We'll come back. Yeah, I got you.
What's that?
I got you. We'll come back to it.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, that's fine. All right, we have staff recommendation, options one through four. Commissioner O'Keefe seconded by Commissioner Maddox. Commissioner Proctor, you're in the queue. Commissioner O'Keefe, do you want to talk about it?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Yes, thank you. There's, I noticed there's a very specific and tight timeline, and I wondered what requires that and, because it seems like it, it seems very prescribed, and I wonder if it's our rule or somebody else's rule.
Yes. Chastity and I can tag team on this. It's two things. It's in your charter, but there's also some deadlines prescribed in statute depending on how you amend your charter. But let me defer to Chastity. She may have a little bit more to add to that.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, yes, there are some timeline provisions in the charter, but then there are also references in the charter that direct compliance with certain statutes. Those statutes relate to requirements and timelines when a county is considering adopting a charter, but they were incorporated into our charter and our existing CCRC timeframe, which does compress the timeframes a little bit, considering we also have a hard deadline by which we have to provide any proposed charter amendments to the supervisor of elections for inclusion on the ballot. So there is kind of a time crunch toward the end for board consideration of any final recommendations of the CCRC, but that's why, because that's the current, that's the current timeline provided in the charter.
And so what does that do for people? What benefit does that give us?
There's, it's really not a benefit or a non-benefit per se. It doesn't minimize or eliminate public input, the ability of the CCRC to deliberate before it makes final recommendations. It's just, again, the final timeframes. If you look at Table 1 in the agenda item, which is on, I think, page 749 of the agenda materials.
That's correct.
It's toward the end. It's, so the CCRC has to have three public hearings before, and then adopt at the final third hearing its final recommendations to the board. You then, again, you have, you have to count back from your general election date to the deadline to provide any proposed charter amendments to the supervisor of elections for inclusion on the ballot. And then that kind of indicates where the board has time to deliberate, any proposals from the CCRC. So that's where that timeframe comes from.
And I would just add, Commissioner, Mr. Chairman, if I could.
Sure.
As the county attorney said, there is ample time built into this process for the committee. As you can see, it takes a year. And just to, again, to amplify what the county attorney was saying, when we originally passed the charter, it wasn't uncommon for a charter committee to pick up the language that was under the original Charter Review Commission, when you originally established a committee, and to copy those statutory deadlines for your future charter review committees. As the county attorney said, we don't have to follow that. And that may very well be something that this committee wants to take a look at and to see if we have even additional flexibility by getting rid of some of those deadlines in here and that sort of thing. But it is what we're under currently. But again, it may very well be, these are the types of issues that Charter Review Committees often take a look at.
Okay. And so this is something that we can change. It's kind of cleanup from when the charter was first done, and it, so, but it would have to change through the charter.
Yes.
To remove these outdated references to statute. So what I'd like to do is amend my motion to option one through four and direct staff to provide information on the necessary steps to change cleanup and out-of-date statutes that are referred to that don't apply anymore.
Commissioner O'Keefe, would it be easier, because I assume there may be other people who would like to provide board direction, if we just stick with one through four and then come back to five and kind of build a list? I mean, I don't know how y'all want to deal with that, but if there's seven of us making 10 recommendations, option five might get convoluted, but it might get convoluted anyway at that point, so.
I'm happy to, I'm happy to do that. And I'll say, just reiterate, we don't have to bring ideas up now to get them in there. It just, this is one I know that would have some technical things to it. So, yeah, so I'll leave my motion. I'll leave my motion.
Okay, so we're on, we got one through four.
One through four.
And then we'll deal with five separately. Okay. Commissioner Proctor, you're in the queue to speak. Do you want to wait until we get to?
Mr. Chairman, I wanted to ask council, when the council, the Board of County Commission, the recommendations that we make require, if I read this right, four votes plus one for it to be a referendum item. Is that accurate? Have I read this correctly?
For board proposed amendments?
For board proposed amendments? Yes, it is, it is, it is a majority plus one. So it would require five. Yes.
The B O C C, are we waived from our suggestions or recommended items from going to the CCRC? Or would our recommendations have to flow through the CCRC committee for their approval?
No, there are two tracks. You can make suggestions to the CCRC to have them consider and bring back recommendations to you, but there is also an additional secondary track where the board itself can just, under the board-proposed amendment process provided for in the charter, bring your own amendments.
Great. Does a state statute limit us to 14, or can we move that number?
It's, Mr. Chairman, it's the charter that actually has language that says that the committee shall be comprised in a manner that the board determines. So you've got a lot of flexibility there. You could go more, or you could go fewer, unless you add anything else on that. Yeah. So again, you have flexibility there.
I just would caution and say to our board that my observation, first of all, I believe this committee, its composition, we should strive for D E I. It deserves to have youth on it. It deserves to have elderly persons on it, and we should have a cross section. And what has happened in years ago is that the most prominent citizens would choose seven or eight things and rally for five. And the control, once you get the first lockdown of what the issues are, it becomes virtually impossible for any other part of the community to add to because they act like we have the Ten Commandments, and we got them from Mount Sinai, and you don't need to add anything else to it. And I just despise a process where the most prominent people serve this committee, lock down on what they want, and really tune out and begin to spin and put public spin against that which they don't want. I hope that this is an exercise, not dominated by the bigs, but that welcomes a cross section in that there is, it don't have to be harmony like that, but it ought to be regard for the citizens who come to the table. And those are the dynamics which concern me, that we have women on this thing, young people on this, and not just haughty-tauties and super bigs. That's important. And county attorney, I ask you how much to my desire to see diversity on this panel? How much can we state that? Are we exempt, I mean, not exempt, but are we prohibited from stating things like, we want 20, 30, 40, 50, 60-year-old people, you know, and that number? And maybe two people's not enough. Our county has grown. Maybe what we need is 21 people. Maybe this board needs to nominate threefold. That we each are queuing into not that standard citizen who's always over and over on every little citizen committee, and of course, they're going to trot and beg on us to nominate them for some reason, other, other. And then my final point is, county administrator, you know that our committee commissioned the last time, had recommendations. City commission came down here, led by Mayor Marks, and just torpedoed the final recommendation and desire. And, I mean, are we just wimps too? The city commission don't like what comes out of the county's ordinance and can come down and do that again? Or how do we protect the process that our citizens' voice are not inferior to a tal acid city mayor and their machine to annihilate the voices of what we, the people of the county, want to put on the ballot? That right there concerns me. I don't want to see that happen again, and we need to protect their voices, that they're not intimidated, that the city is kept out of this process, and I don't want to see them back in the door if we need to keep them out. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. All right, Commissioners, we have a motion for option.
I'm sorry. I was waiting for.
Oh, you were asking a question?
Yes, my first question was, how do we state that request for diversity at this table?
The board directs the number and composition of the CCRC, period. So you decide as a group.
And as, Mr. Chairman, just to answer the question you asked, ultimately, the board determines while your committee makes recommendations. Ultimately, it's the board that decides what to put on the referendum. But I will note, the last one, the last time we had the revision, the one charter amendment you placed on was an amendment for the county's environmental ordinances to supersede the city's environmental ordinances, and that passed. And again, so that was the one issue that was on the last charter ballot. There were more that the board didn't accept, but that one was one of them.
All right, so is, would that be, if Commissioner Proctor wanted to propose a different makeup, would he do that under number five? Option one? Okay, Commissioner Proctor, if you want to try and amend option one, which is in the motion and seconded right now, that's your.
Commissioners, I would like to see us move this to a 21-member citizen charter that gives a little more flex for the idea of what I'm hopeful that somebody from Woodville could be good enough if, you know, I or Commissioner Caban would recommend that person or someone from Highway 20 could get on this and be respected. And I just think that we ought to seek balanced representation, make a Sookie and all like that. Those are the things which undergird democracy and participatory engagement in that those citizens are protected, though they may not have the practice in the history of coming to a civic table and voicing. They may not have the confidence, but we should create a balanced community that people are made to feel welcomed at that table. And those are the concerns that I have.
Commissioner Proctor, might I suggest that whether that number's two appointees per commissioner, or three, or five, we ultimately hold the power to appoint who we want. So if you make it 100 appointees, and you're still going to get the same balance of hoity-toities versus regular folks in Woodville or wherever, so.
I'd like to move the number to, my motion's for option one to go to 21, that each commissioner would have three appointees.
Okay, who is the seconder?
So, no, I made the motion.
Oh, you were the maker of the motion.
I have made the motion.
So you'd have to make an amendment.
And I will amend my motion for options one through four with establishing 21 members, three appointed per commissioner.
Correct.
Okay, so we have an amended motion. Who is the seconder of the motion?
Everyone, don't jump at once.
Go with that? Okay, so we have options one through four with the 21-member Citizen Charter Review Committee, and then we have Commissioner Caban and Commissioner Cummings in the queue.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have a couple of questions for staff pertaining to this item. Mr. Chair.
Yeah, go ahead.
At any time, can we assign topics for the CCRC to discuss? Or do we have to, by next meeting, come up with all our topics for the board to discuss and then present it to them then?
Yeah, again, this timeframe provides the opportunity for the board, either through your members or to the committee as a whole, once they're convened, to offer items. I think what we do at the next meeting, the reason that we say, hey, you know, again, if there are any board-initiated type amendments, it just, it gives you an ability to sort of see, you know, is there something that has sort of a general sentiment, you know, on behalf of the board to propose to them, and does it have that kind of majority? However, the process remains open, again, for 120 days, that they'll be convened, and the board has ample opportunity to provide, or individual commissioners has ample opportunity to make recommendations to the committee.
Thank you for that clarification. I have a question for the county attorney, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
Based on state statute, Madam Attorney, I know the county administrator just previously mentioned that we have in our charter the ability to supersede city ordinance on environmental. If it was the CCRC's will and we put it on the ballot, could the county supersede the city on any ordinance? If approved by the voters?
Generally, yes. The charter is generally deferential in terms of enabling, when they're in conflict, for city ordinances to basically trump or supersede county ordinances currently, with the exception of the environmental standards provision.
Okay, that's all I have.
Okay. Commissioner Cummings, followed by Commissioner Maddox and Commissioner Proctor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have a couple of clarifying questions by county attorney. This committee is subject to sunshine, right? Meetings have to be noticed, correct?
That is correct.
Based on announce?
That is correct.
Okay, and is, and if we approve the amended motion for each commissioner to appoint three members, is no mechanism to scrutinize who I appoint or who another commissioner appoints? Am I correct?
I'm sorry, what's your question?
Right, well, going back, we were talking, Commissioner Proctor was talking about our desire, hopefully, to get a cross-section of the community, perhaps, diversity, you know, looking at men, women, what have you. If my appointees are within my discretion, how do we scrutinize the appointees, or do we have the ability to do so?
What do you?
To make sure we have the diversity, a cross-section of the community?
She's not having other.
All those things that we desire.
You will appoint your appointees, each commissioner will appoint their appointees, and the composition will be what it is?
Whatever it is.
Based on those three appointees by each commissioner?
Okay.
As currently proposed.
Awesome. Okay, that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am. Commissioner Maddox?
We're on items one through four, correct?
Correct, with an amendment to one to be 21 members.
We'd like for us to hold items on five.
We're going to hold that, yeah.
Okay, I'll hold my comment.
Okay, Commissioner Proctor?
Thank you. I just want to just cut to the chase. Utility Review Board, we kicked that. Utility review board, we, uh, kicked that around, uh, and we wanted to put that on the, uh, on the, uh, referendum. I believe the city commission.
Court of Commerce, Chair. Okay.
Wouldn't that be a part of five?
Are you trying to suggest something?
Well, we're doing, we're doing one through four, which is.
We're just doing one through four, if you have specific directions.
Are we subject matter prohibited from referendum, uh, items? I know, I, the, the last time we tried to put a, a citizens' utility review board, uh, there, and it was opposed by the city in that, for whatever reason, they didn't want any oversight. I know the legislature disallows, um, police review boards, uh, the state has annihilated those, but it has not allowed, annihilated the, uh, utility review board. And I'm asking on the front end, is that a prohibited subject that can't be, um, that can't be rocked from, uh, a, uh, CCRC?
Mr. Chair, before, before the county attorney answered that question, I think that's part of five. If, can we dispense with one through four and then take that up? It's the first thing you take up? I think that would be.
Yeah, I think that would be the right order, Commissioner Proctor, if you just wait a second and we get to number five.
Very good.
All right, we've got, uh, Commissioner Caban. Okay, um, we got a motion for options one through four with the amendment of option, option one to have 21-member citizens charter review committee. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, the passes unanimously. Now we're on option five, which is board direction on specific issues. I've got Caban, then Maddox. Proctor, do you want to?
Sure, sure, come back.
Okay.
I, I was going to comment on Commissioner Proctor, but, Mr. Chair, I would allow Commissioner Proctor to speak first.
Mr. Proctor, you want to go ahead?
Yes, yes. Commissioners, I'm interested in, uh, our community having an opportunity for once in our lives for a citizens', uh, uh, review board of our utility. Um, not happy with the shutout, the lockout of, um, you know, I'm not happy about citizens who pay utility bills and can't vote in city elections. Uh, I'm not happy about citizens who pay a fire service fee to the city and can't vote in the city elections. And I'm interested in, uh, a review, a charter amendment that makes voting rights empowered to and among those who pay city utility bills and a fire service fee. And, uh, is that prohibited as a subject matter, Madam County Attorney?
I will have to research, for any proposal that the board puts forward, I'll have to do specific research to make sure that what we are proposing is not inconsistent with law. So if you want, and that's the board's direction, I would research that and come back to you and let you know.
That's on number five.
Yeah, and on the 16th, the board is going to appoint the members anyway, so that's when that information will come back to the board for anything that the board proposes now.
Commissioners, I'm requesting your support that the county attorney tells us, uh, can we referendum, uh, that unincorporated area citizens who pay for city utilities and who pay for cities' fire services fee, that they have the right to vote, because they're being taxed, and they cannot vote.
All right, so can y'all just keep a list?
Yes.
Okay.
Secondly, uh, Commissioners, uh, our need for, uh, extending, uh, incorporated lines, uh, has to go south of Tillman Funeral Home, and everybody inside a capital circle on the south side, should be in the city limit, are incorporated area, but they're not. And they're depleted of, of full services, they pay for city utilities, fire services, and cannot vote. Uh, I'd like to see a referendum item that we, the people, of the people, and for the people, would extend, uh, incorporated area to include everything inside of capital circle. That's the second thing.
Okay.
One point.
Oh, uh.
And the third thing is a, a citizens' utility review board. That's the third point, Madam Attorney. Those are three things, um, that, um, concern me deeply, and I'd like to see.
Uh, Commissioner Caban is next. Commissioner Maddox, do you want to go on a point there?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure that we can dictate comp plan in a, in, in constitution. Madam Chair. I, I'm, I'm sorry, in a charter. Madam Attorney, what Commissioner Proctor is asking, that we extend the urban services area boundary to, uh, or incorporated boundary to cover, uh, I think you said Woodville? I'm not, I'm not sure that we can.
I don't think he's talking about the USA. I think he's talking about annexation, which is different.
Okay, can we, can we?
We would take a look. There are statutes that address annexation, so again, that's something that we would bring back and determine what we could and couldn't do in our charter.
But, but let me ask this question, uh, legal. Why is annexation always triggered from the city, but the county cannot propose the marriage, but only the city can ask if we will accept to be married to them? Uh, we need something that, if we can also propose a marriage, uh, dictate, mandate one through, uh, revised, uh, charter.
Again, that's something that we'd have to look at the existing statutory provisions which provide for city annexation or for direct property owner annexation requests. But we would have to look to see if there's a third option where the county can request annexation. That's something we would research and come back to you with.
Very good.
Add that to the list?
Very good.
All right, Commissioner Caban, you're up, and then we got Commissioner Maddox, O'Keefe, Minor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And everybody else.
Commissioners, one thing I, I want to bring to our attention to, uh, for us to discuss and, and we're specifically related to this, uh, charter review committee is this. Over time, the city of Tallahassee's city limits has expanded. If you look at a map of the city of Tallahassee's, uh, m- map, city limit map from 1990 to now, it has continued to expand. Commissioner Proctor, the idea you're proposing is not a bad idea. However, as the county commissioners, the way our current charter is set up, anytime we annex or properties annex into the city, we lose all poli- policy jurisdiction over it. And my fear is, over time, the city of limits boundaries has expanded, which means our jurisdiction gets smaller. And eventually, folks are going to come to us and they're going to say, would, just do what Jacksonville did, let's consolidate, which I don't know if that's for, for the people or not. You know, I would need someone to look into that. However, the more city limits expands, the less jurisdiction we're going to have. I would argue it's, it's in our taxpayers' best interests for us to look at putting on the ballot that all Leon County policy will supersede city policy. Otherwise, as more, as the city of Tallahassee grows, we lose jurisdiction. And then eventually, they're going to say, if the city limits continue to grow and grow, what's the point of having a board of county commissioners? And so I think it's worth us having a conversation, because I understand the incentive in how the city uses their utility to incentivize developers and, and property owners to annex in city limits. They give them incentives on the utility and sewer fee hookups, and they can give incentives there. And so I think it's, uh, Mr. County Administrator, I would like to add to the list is, is having policy for the charter review to, committee to discuss of having all policy, all county policies supersede the city policy or ordinance, that all, all county policies supersede the city policy if there is a conflict.
Or ordinances, all county.
Or all county ordinances, my apologies.
That's okay.
Additionally, Commissioner Proctor, I think a review committee for the utility is too small. I think we need to discuss having a, a utility authority where the county commission has two or three seats in, in managing the utility, because there are large portions of the unincorporated area where the city of Tallahassee utility serves, and those people cannot vote in city elections. I'm going to propose, in my commissioner time, something specifically for that, but I'll wait to discuss that in my commissioner time. But Commissioners, the city of Tallahassee has the, the ability to charge a 50% surcharge on our county residents that live in the unincorporated area and use city of Tallahassee Madam Attorney, can you opine on that?
That is the city's interpretation of an existing statutory provision. It does authorize a city to charge a surcharge when it provides utility services in an incorporate, in an unincorporated area. That is true.
That means our residents in Leon County that don't live in the city of Tallahassee, that have no say on city elections, have the, are getting charged 50% surcharge on their utilities. I think that's wrong. I don't think that's in the best interest of our taxpayers. And I think if that, if that agreement is going to continue exist, we need to look at a u- utility authority for the charter review committee to discuss. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, so you, you'll add that to the list? Okay, um, Commissioners, if possible, may not be possible, I'd like us to take a break in 10 minutes, but probably not going to make it.
Mr. Chair, I just need to ask the county attorney one question.
Sure, sure. I've got Commissioner Maddox next.
Oh, okay.
Is that okay?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, um, Mr. Chair, I, 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 I don't think we should offer any recommendations or suggestions to the committee. I believe we should let them, uh, do their work, uh, and bring back to them, bring to, back to us what they recommend our charter amendments should be. Um, if you so choose to give your appointees direction or things that you'd like for them to look into, uh, individually, I, I think you can do that, but, but us as a board sending things for them to consider, I, I just, I don't agree with. So, um, not in opposition to any of the things that may be, uh, pushed forward from this, from, from individual commissioners, uh, but I won't support anything that we put forward. Now, if these things come back from the committee, so be it. I'm not, again, I'm not in opposition of anything that has been said thus far, uh, but I do believe, I, I, I believe the process for me, uh, that I would like to see is for us to, if you want to have meetings with your individual folks and talk to them about some things that interest you and they want to take it forward, um, then, then so be it. But I, I just, I want that process to be citizen-led, citizen-thought-through, uh, and citizen-produced back to us to be able to put on the ballot, unless we find, and then, unless we find some that we just want to put. Now, as I understand it, Madam Attorney, you did say that, once we get all of the recommendations back, we can place some, uh, commission, uh, produced, um, amendments on the, on the ballot, correct?
Based on the timing, there will not be time for any, you will either have to accept that what the recommendations are, or not accept the CCRC under that process.
That's true.
Because of the timing.
Yeah.
Because if, if you were going to propose a modification or something different, you have to give a certain amount of notice before you do that. And under this timeframe, there isn't time to do that. However, that's where the separate board.
Right.
Proposed amendments process would come into play. The board can independently do that. So if, if the CCRC earlier on is deliberating, it's having conversation, it's, you know, and you don't like the direction the CCRC is going with something, you can trigger the board-proposed charter amendment process on your own.
Right. So, so long story short, I, I will be voting in opposition of anything that we do considering option five, not because, again, I don't support what may come from this commission, but because I would like for the citizens to be able to come up with our own citizen-led process and amendments, uh, for us to consider, to replace as board, and, and once we consider those, if we want to add through the co, through the commission, um, route, we could add. But I don't want us to bog down, uh, this, this, uh, CRC with our own thoughts and, and, uh, policies that we'd like for them to consider. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Maddox. Commissioner O'Keefe.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, and, uh, thank you, Commissioner Proctor, Commissioner Caban, um, because I like that we consider all of these issues. They all come under, um, what we run into, which is, um, you know, we have, over the, over the decades, worked out between us and the city who does what and who's in charge of what, and, um, what may have worked in the past may not be working in the future, and it doesn't mean everything. It may mean this, but not that, but that, not that, and I think that's citizen referendum is where that's considered. But, um, Commissioner Maddox has convinced me, um, along his line of reasoning on this, because as much as I came in and I'm thinking, all right, this is a great idea, this is a great idea to be considered, this is a great idea to be considered, we can appoint people that, that, you know.
Advance those.
That, that support that and, and that, and we have our own method if we want, if the citizens don't pick up what we want and we think they're missing something, we can go that path. But I like leaving it be. We pick the citizens we think represents the community best, and we let them come up with they, what they want without, um, directing them, and, uh, during this whole year, we, we can, um, put our own that we think they might be missing. And so, um, while a lot of these ideas I like and think need to be considered, I want to leave this process to, let's let the citizens committee start with these ideas.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Keefe. Commissioner Minor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, you know, Commissioner Maddox has provided some thoughtful comments on this, and Commissioner O'Keefe has too. I, you know, I, uh, I'm going to support that line of thinking on this. You know, I, we work for the citizens. This is a citizens' charter review committee. Uh, I think it's, uh, it's, I think the best approach is to let them drive it within the committee itself. And as has already been said, you know, we, we get to appoint three people, uh, as members of the committee. I think we have the ability to talk with them and, and ask them if they agree to, to, to pitch some of the ideas that we've got, as well as having discussions with them about this in, in general. So I'm, I, I think that Commissioner Maddox is on to something here. I think that's the right approach. I do have one question, though, um, aside from the comments I just made. Regarding the, the timing here, uh, Mr. Chairman, I think this is for the county administrator. Um, our, our next time to review this and, uh, is to review the agenda item for September 16th. Will we, at that time, i- if the board decides to go a different direction and actually have ideas that we presented to the citizens review committee, will we, at that time, be able to introduce ideas there in time for staff to provide analysis, for us to, uh, have that on a list of items for the, uh, review committee to review when they convene October 23rd?
Uh, whichever.
Yeah, it, it, well, that's why we, um, provided this opportunity.
Right.
Yeah, so that we would have the opportunity to check in with the board. If you did have any items that you wanted us to do some analysis on, we would be able to bring that to you on the 16th, so that, um, you'd be able to give that direction to us before they convene.
Understood. That's fine. That's fine. And that's separate from my comments. I, I believe that Commissioner Maddox has got the right approach here, and I'm going to support that line of thinking. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Cummings, you were in the queue, but I think you slipped out.
Yeah, I was.
You back in. I'm going to put you, uh, ahead of Commissioner Proctor, because he, he come in there after, after you fell out. So go ahead, Commissioner Cummings, and then I'll come back to Commissioner Proctor.
Just very briefly, I'm, I'm not clear on what motion is on the floor right now. I know Commissioner Maddox.
We've got, uh, option five, um, with us presenting ideas where we build the list. Commissioner Maddox indicated he doesn't like that motion, so I assume he'll vote against that along, you know, with some.
But the, the motion is on the floor.
The motion is currently number five with us providing board direction.
Okay, and just very briefly, I, I, I believe as elected officials, we are certainly, in my opinion, in a good position. Um, uh, may I ask our county attorney, is there a prohibition against us as elected officials talking to our appointees, even giving them suggestions about areas that we believe might need some addressing, uh, like Commissioner Caban and Commissioner Proctor mentioned, what they feel is a disparity as far as what's being billed for utility services and, and, uh, fire services? Is, is it a prohibition against that?
There is no prohibition against any county commissioner talking to a member of the CCRC. Both bodies are subject to the sunshine law, but you not, you're not serving on the same collegial body. So you can't talk to each other about things that come before this board. The CCRC members can't talk about things outside of notice meetings, about things that are going to come before them, but you guys don't serve on the same bodies. So you can talk to individual appointees, uh, to the CCRC as much as you like, but as always, you cannot serve as conduits. So you can't talk to one of your appointees and then go to another appointee and say, I've told so-and-so, I want to do this, how are you going to vote? They're going to vote this way. All of the usual no conduit rules apply in that context, like it does with this body as well.
Thanks, thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Chairman, I was just going to add, the first thing that your committee will do when they're, uh, convened is that they'll get, uh, a lesson from the county attorney on, on sunshine laws and that sort of thing. So they'll, they'll know all the rules. laws and that sort of thing, so they'll know all the rules.
Absolutely. And then my last question from a legal standpoint, Madam County Attorney, is what suggestions or recommendations come before that committee? And then if we as a body move forward and say, well, we want to present this to the citizens as a referendum, it goes to the citizenry and is voted upon in the general election. And if it's a situation where we disagree with some of the policies that the city has as far as charging customers for the fire services or other services that they're not, sewer services that they are not receiving, that vote can control what the city does and does not charge for usage?
So again, we will have to review each individual proposal to determine whether it's consistent with law, existing law, and jurisdictionally, whether whatever that issue is, is appropriate for the charter. So it'll have to be like a case-by-case, like review and determination, and then that information will have to be identified for the CCRC as it's deliberating.
Okay, because the county doesn't own the utilities.
Correct.
And if we address some specific issues as it relates to those particular services, you know,
Right.
we might be putting, well, we'll just have to look at it on a case-by-case basis. I understand factually. Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Commissioner Proctor, you were in the queue. You want to take one more stab at it, and then I'll close this out, or vice versa?
You're a good man. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I thank you so much for this commission's patience. It's just that Commissioner Minor and Commissioner Maddox are fundamentally at a point of surrender, which is not required of us. This is why initially I asked the question, does the VOC have the authority to make the recommendations? And who is Cameron Williams? Cameron Williams? Ken, who is that? Williams did a good job, really great job, of making simple, some things which probably put you to sleep faster than anything in a drugstore. Charter language. Did a great job. Thank you. Ken, you did a great job. We appreciate that. But understand, commissioners, we don't begin the process by relinquishing our legislative authority to a citizens group saying, we're waiting. And I don't know how you feel, but I feel a little, I mean, we're not sissies huddled up and can't make a move, but under this Board of County Commissioners segment on page four, it says that since the approval of the charter, there have been no board-initiated amendments. I don't know how you feel, but everything we've ever done has deferred to a citizens group. When we have the authority according to what we're given here, and so option five, pretty clear, provide board direction on any specific issues for staff to bring back. This is a two-part ask, to provide specific issues for staff to bring back in an analysis, and then for the board to determine if the issue should be addressed by the citizens Charter Review Committee. So we're asking our staff to investigate, and then we get to gnaw on it, chew on the bone again, and determine if we would defer to a charter group to review those things. But just to simply say that we don't need to think, we don't need to consider, there ought to be no analysis on our part, let's just let them start from scratch, and let us get in eight more years another sentence that says, since the approval of the charter, there has been no brain activity from the board. There's been no board-initiated amendments. This shows a lack of brain activity on our part. Flat line. We don't have to just acquiesce and be flat lines in the process, and I challenge us not to be. Thank you.
Thank you. I think the flat line is heart activity. Commissioner, I'm going to close it out, Commissioner Maddox, if it's okay with you. I mean, I'll say what I say, and you can go if you want. You know, this is interesting. I tend to agree with Commissioner Proctor and Commissioner Caban. I think that we as a county commission represent constituents, and why wouldn't we put forth requests to the county attorney to bring back analysis? I mean, she might come back and go, you can't do that. You can't tell the utility what to do at the city, but like, how do we know if we don't ask? You know, like, I think it's really, option five to me is more like a search and explorer mission for us to kind of see what even statutorily we can legally do in imposing our will on our sister government. We may not be able to. We know that there's, but I think that that request is based in a lot of, like, really fair criticism when you talk about the fees in Klarne Lakes or Woodville for sewer services. When you talk about the fire services fees, it's kind of, you know, hey, man, we're going to ask a lot more from your people that you made a five-year agreement with. I think that, and I think, I say that sort of in the ether of also, I think if any of us said, hey, I think that we should, you know, we should limit salaries of commissioners or what. I mean, I think that as commissioners, we have the ability, and I think the duty, frankly, to at least flirt with the ideas, you know? They may come back, we may not get married, and we may not even date, but I think we okay flirting with the ideas. And so I think that's what option five is asking us very specifically. I know that's probably going to put a lot of work on our staff to look at these things, but I think that's a part of this process. And I think that if we don't do this, we're just going to tell the members that we appoint to the committee that we want them to do this, and they're going to advance those ideas more than likely than not anyway. And so you're going to see these generally brought back up again. And that may be, Commissioner Proctor, why you've never seen a board produce agenda, charter agenda item, because it just comes through the committee anyway. And so I think it's okay for us at this point in the game to put these forward, because as they've said, you can't do this in September, it's going to be too late to get that analysis. So I'm going to support the motion on the table with little list, which I think is a pretty modest list, frankly, given that there's seven of us, and there's, what, how many, five or six things on the list? Five things. You know, it could have been 30 things. We could have gone hog wild. So I think that's fair. Here's a question for the county administrator. What happens if this does not get approved? Then do we just, do we just go to option five without providing direction?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So, oh, we got two more back in there. Commissioner Maddox?
And I think you need a motion on the
Yeah, in a second.
We have a motion, don't we?
No, we don't.
Not on five, not on option.
Oh, because I guess we were hammering out ideas. Okay. Well, Commissioner Maddox, you are in the queue. Would you want to make a motion?
You might not like my motion, Mr. Chairman, but I'll make
That's okay.
All right. I'm making a motion that we make no recommendations to the CRC, and we allow them to do their work. Make my motion.
I'll second the motion.
Okay.
If I could provide a comment, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Administrator, Madam Attorney, let's say we come up with five things. Say we come up with seven or 10 things that we want them to look at. I would imagine that they would absolutely have to look at those things that we send to them, correct? Okay. We give them a list of 10 things to look at. I don't know how many amendments or how many things the city's CRC looked at, but I would imagine that if we sent them enough things, we could send enough things to take up enough time to where whatever they wanted to consider would be considered. I'm not saying that the things that we think are important should not be put forward to our CRC. What I'm saying is that each one of us will have three people that we put on that CRC. I think it's not a bad process for us to sit down with those three people and tell them about what we're thinking. If they agree with us, that they would have the power to take those things forward and present those to the committee for consideration, not for us to dictate to them right now what we think they should be looking at. Again, my only request, my only thought here is that this would be a citizen-led process without us dictating to them with the things that we would like for them to do and the time that we would like for them to spend on the issues that we want them to look at. There are ways, as you just said, Mr. Chair, in the past, which you probably have, you probably had commissioners sitting down with their appointees and talk through some of the things that they liked seeing those appointees bring those things forward for the consideration by the CRC. So it's not like if we don't do it today, it's not going to be done. The same process is going to happen. If we ask for analysis from the county attorney or the county administrator, you're going to bring that analysis back, and we're going to vote to put forth those things. But if the CRC did the same thing, and they asked for certain analyses to come back, which were the things that we asked for, it would be the same exact process, correct, Madam Attorney?
That is correct. The county administrator and myself will be staffing the CCRC, so any proposal that the CCRC puts forward would have to undergo the same review and vetting process to determine that whatever is recommended is legal.
So to hear me out, we have, for the most part, and I don't remember all five of them, but I think the majority of them is about how much control we have over things that happened within the city. I think one of them was utility authority, correct, Madam Attorney? The other was how do we supersede city ordinances? And I think there was a couple more.
Fire services.
Fire services.
Authorizes citizens to pay for city utilities and fire services fees to vote, address annexation, citizens utility reboard, county ordinances to preempt city ordinances, and utility authority.
Right. Sounds like to me what we're talking about here is there's some things that happens at the city and some jurisdictional issues that we have between what they can do and what we're able to do over them. If there's anything I think that should be citizen-led and citizen-brought-up, it is exactly what we're talking about here today. It's issues of jurisdiction between the city and the county. Sit down with your folks, have a conversation. These are the things that I think that you guys should talk about concerning the city, and allow them as citizens to talk back to you about what they think. And if you can agree on it, they will bring them forward. And people, I'm thinking about, will we be strong enough, if I brought up something that they did not agree with, they will look me in the eye and tell me, Nick, I'm not taking that to the CRC, and I will respect them for it. And so that's why I stand where I stand on this. This should be a citizen-led process. We have appointees. You should sit down with your appointees and have conversations about what you're thinking. If your appointees agree with you, they will bring those things forward, and they will have a discussion at the CRC about whether those things are things that are legal, because the county attorney will have an analysis as whether it's something that the citizens of Leon County think that are, or the people in that group think that the citizens of Leon County should look at and vote on. And if there's one thing on there that we don't see, we can always, in a moment, make a commission-led amendment process, add something to it. So again, my vote isn't in opposition of any of the things you guys have talked about. It's a process issue where I believe, again, that this should be citizen-led. It's not the commission review, it's not us on there, it's the citizens that should be leading this, making decisions about what they talk about, and making decisions about what comes back to us. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir. Commissioner O'Keefe, you were in there? Okay, so we've got a motion and a second for option five, do not provide any direction. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
No. Fails, four to three, I think. Commissioner O'Keefe, Commissioner Minor, Commissioner Maddox, and we're on the losing side of that. So does that give you the direction you need then? Or do we need to vote on
Mr. Chair, I move option five.
With the list of five things.
Second.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Caban.
Mr. Chair, if you take a second for any commissioner that wants to add anything to it, to add it, I mean, I'm not, but I think there were some things other commissioners may have wanted to add, that's the only thing I have.
There was just one thing can we add to it? Cleaning up outdated statute references of the charter.
Okay. Y'all got that? All right.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, we can always add to it during the process. And I, Mr. County Administrator, okay.
I just don't know if
So it's not exclusive right now.
Is that what you're saying?
Oh, exhausted, okay.
Just for the purpose of analysis over the next two months.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Caban for staff for option five with board direction on six specific issues, and a second from Commissioner Proctor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
And passes four-three with Commissioner Maddox, O'Keefe, and Minor in opposition. All right, commissioners, I think that'll be a good stopping point for us. We've got to come back at 6 o'clock for our public hearings. We are in, what do you call it? Recession. Thank you.
You should know that.